I will call Manny to work, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and our God in this soul with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. So we'll start today off with the canvas of the election and like I can tell, Mr. Guyver is on vacation. So we need to fill that position and somebody to help us with this. And it could be any elector of the county, so anybody that's a registered voter. Whether you're any volunteer or not, that is not involved in elections, so if you're in the election, you don't want to do this. Or if you're elected, somebody, that's probably not a good idea. Is there anybody else that would volunteer to come up? All of you raise your hand at once.
I have six people that I, uh, four I was able to get a hold of. Two were unable to do it. Two said they were available. One was Michael Waller, one was Sarah.
Sarah is not here, so Michael Waller, would you be willing to do this? So I've made a motion, we have Michael Waller to help with the canvas and the election. All those in favor say aye.
I just threw some of these.
Do you want, if you guys have any questions? Before we start.
Questions from the Senate, you sent.
You should have the same, it's all this stuff.
Oh, well, you sent me a whole check, so I went to the section on county.
It's the same thing, but it's from the Secretary of State.
We're going to need to run into some of them before.
So, no, that's, we have questions here, this is the one. This is the main provisional category, and then that's like the procedures surrounding.
Yes, and that was my question, if we go through these procedures, so.
So, yeah.
Well, it just says preparing for county canvas, and then it gives you the, the steps you're supposed to do, so you have your county canvas. Procedures, and have a group by the board of commissioners performing. Something that's already on file that we would just need to review and approve as we work through. And then it says review statutes regarding advanced voting provisional ballots and other topics that may arise.
Yeah, so that's what this is.
Which I think, and when I read through here, there's more, there is more information here about those things. This is important.
So, yeah, we can.
So I don't know what the written county procedures are, I don't know if that's something we create, or if that's something that is.
To be honest, the cases that I've been a part of, there had these election standards of the Secretary of State. Accelery, for patients.
I think that's the format that's been used for several years.
Yeah, but that's it, you don't, I mean, if there are, I know that there's at least one close, very close election. So as far as I thought, a couple of, thought of, you don't have to campus today, obviously, especially now that we've got a board that's been selected. The latest, uh, have to campus is a week from this Thursday, which would be 13 days after the election.
Fortunately, it changes because he's gone until the 22nd.
Well, no, I, and you've got your board to camp, so now, but I'm saying, uh, in terms of, if an issue comes up on provisionals, or if there are specific procedures, and you all would like to have written procedures like that in place, this is not a statute or requirement. It's sort of a general recommendation.
You advise that you, there's nothing, but you're aware of, like, county standpoint, but are there special county?
I do not know.
No, I mean, I'll talk about what, okay. I didn't, I didn't know if there's already something in place, I didn't know. There is, I mean, we're going to the same policy, what it is, I mean, I'll let Rhonda go, passion's always down, so Rhonda, tell us how you handle this. If anyone has any questions, Josh, you have two, so tell us how you go through these.
Normally I just have little groups by situations, and tug at the situations, and then you decide whether they count or not.
That's pretty cut.
Yeah, at this point, I mean, a good example is down. Page six, well, you guys don't have this, it's the one. And if you want me to, I can send this to Rhonda.
Is this a registered voter moved within the county?
No, I'm reading off of this.
Okay.
This is photography of the canvas, so. You've got TV cameras here or something like that, uh, you may adopt policies. So I think that that's kind of the idea that.
We have the game on, so.
My point is, if it was made, you may do, adopt policies so that everyone knows that those are made, but, yeah.
So should we just print one of these for both of them, and then as we progress through, if this needs to be referenced?
Sure.
Can you send that to?
We're going to get started, I want to make that, when the word comes up. That's basically my.
So Rhonda, if you're ready, we'll start.
Just send this to. The first group is voters who turn 18 after the books closed and the whole books were printed before Election Day. They are, if they turn 18 before Election Day, it should be.
Which numbers are on there? That should be a pretty easy one to clarify, because I would think that anybody that's 18 at the time of election, go.
They were, we have to put them in suspens, it won't allow them to be put in until they turn 18, so it was before, that was after printed full bets.
That's a recommendation. Yeah, it's not.
No, it's not. So I'll make the motion, and we'll approve those ballots to be counted. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all post same time, motion, yes.
I'm just double checking, these are all other counties? Where I see that. These are all people who were registered in other counties, um, and moved into those same counties. They are all different dates that they moved into the county? So if it's been more than 30 days, they were not counted, if it's been less than 30 days, they would be counted. So there's no date on this one, we can't say, this one was February of 22, no date, no date. This one was May of 21, no date, no date. This one was May of 21, no date. This one was 8/17 of 21, this was 12/15 of 21, no date, no date. 8/1, but I do not know what year, because I didn't put it, no date. This one was 8/1 of 25, 8/1 of 21, 6 of 21, no date given, no date given, no date given, no date given. 6/12 of 21. August of 21, no date given, no date given, August of 21, no date given. 10/10 of 17, 6/10 of 12, no date given, no date given. 22. So they're saying they moved there the day before the election on this one, so I'm going to pull it out and set it separate. No date given, no date given, no date given, 10/21, I assume they need the 10th month of the 25, 21. Uh, no date given, 5/21, no date given, no date given, 7/23 of 21. And we did go through and pull the county that these were from and print to show what county they registered in. Guys, have to carry out these, okay, sure. Up to the top of the slide, and then I'll show print where they come to register.
That's where they registered, so when they moved, they did not.
They did not register. But this one says Shoney County up there, this one says Ramsey County.
So I'm a person that might qualify, I think, because they really moved.
I don't know, when they moved, I don't know that they actually moved the date before the election.
Yeah, so, most election laws are based on, you know, perjury and.
So you just assume it's true?
So they, even cross the data.
So then, there's one.
There's one that shows that they moved within 30 days, but if they moved within 30 days, they're also supposed to vote at their former precinct. Well, her former precinct moved in Shoney County, so she didn't fit that criteria yet.
I'd say what I like to, is that a registered voter moved anywhere in the state within 30 days of election, and they voted at former precinct, then it's a yes, but other than that, it's all, it looks like they're all in those.
And now, you look at it, it's from Shoney County.
So how many is that?
Which fan base, following along with these, these are the legal authorities, the Kansas Article 5, Section 125, 3702, is what all these fall under. Yeah, so the only one that shows that would be recognized as a yes, is a registered voter.
That was 42.
That category is summarized. Ballots cast by person.
Were registered in Shoney County.
Therefore, voting in a different precinct.
These two were correct for the age situation, but then this is more age, and then these are last names. I have the file turned wrong way. Um, these are turning 18, 18. So, this one.
What, what was it, it's a dollar, I have like the four, seven, eight, or like.
This is turning 18, this is turning 18. And those two, and then I have. This is last name, and this is last name. So here are last register, did not turn 18 until 7/27, 7/25. This is an H1, they turned. That was 7/12 that they turned 18, and they turned 18 on 7/28, so they're just four of those.
On that very first one we get, there's just four.
And that's what it really has.
Okay, I thought she said seven.
Okay, this one, I'm at, actually, I put that aside, so I, Sarah, I was more of that, okay. This is a ballot that came through the mail, it was not signed by the voter, so if you go to your advanced.
Registered voter. To know.
We had one unsigned, okay?
There are several statutes that show that, 25/11, 24, 25/11, 36.
I also have another one, this person became deceased between the time their ballot was mailed and the actual election day. Um, and, but it is not signed either by the elector, so I have two non-signed. By the elector, so.
So they were both good news.
It's unsigned, so it will be page three, or number three on the H1.
Yeah, they have to record it, the statute. So do we need to make motions for any of those last counts?
So, so far, only four have been exceptions.
Well, correct.
And where are we putting those?
Right.
Here, just send them down here, put them down here.
Well, let's not put it out there.
We'll send them down here, or they'll get mixed up in something.
So I have two unsigned.
So do we make one motion for all the ones we're not counting, or should we do them each individually?
I think you do one motion, ask, ask you if there are any questions that any of those should count. Specifically, but otherwise, you give your general recommendation, whatever the top, or recommendations of which ones not count.
Okay, so show you the one.
Yep.
Those are nice, okay. Um, these were all received and postmarked afterwards in S-18. Um, they had to be postmarked by the second, these are, that's the fourth, third, 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 and the. I find words that says about the dates. But that's the bad one, if you get some trace states offices. By Election Day, and received by Friday after Election Day.
So those would be enough? How much of that does that say?
And they all have.
Some of these page numbers are different than this, and I don't know if this is updated or.
Those are enough. So get to the statute.
That's the one with the date.
The date's after the election.
And we're not accepting this, because we just can't find a.
There is a statute.
We need to pull that Secretary of State office in order to be counted, and they have to be postmarked on Election Day, Friday after.
So those are dated the day after.
I didn't hear, I have to mail my certificate.
They have to be mailed, but postmarked the Election Day, received in our office by the Friday after. Those will come this time, the Saturday, the third and the fourth.
So, case 5581132 says, all advanced voting ballots received by mail by the Office of the United Election Officer after proposing a paper and a motion. Which are postmarked for otherwise. Date for election, shall be delivered at the county election, officer, in the special. Received by mail, advanced voting ballots by the Office of the County, such as the last delivery of mail by the United. So, they've got the postmark, or otherwise, United States. Nailed on the board, on the board, so if they're postmarked after, then.
Okay, and then we're set, okay, then we have one, two, three, like, five of six that have no voter registration information on the back of them, they did not complete the voter registration card at the polling place. So we have no way to know what the situation was, um, to know if they would have counted at all polling places in there. This one is in Sage City, this one is in Linden, this one is in Carbondale, 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 and when they.
So those are not advanced voting, then what are they?
They, they voted at a polling place, but they did not complete the voter registration card, which is part of the process.
So what, do those follow them, Rhonda?
Um, I don't know.
Because they're not advanced voting, are they?
No, they're regular voters.
So is it number seven?
Because they did not complete the press paperwork to change. I don't know what exactly happened, because, um.
So I just signed the books, oh, why did I?
This says registration date is 7/13, which is too late to register, not in book, moved, recently moved here, recently moved to area, and registration is 7/13.
They have to cast, cast a ballot.
Correct, right. And we are six of them, so we'll put them in this pile.
So I understand, is that correct? Yep.
This group is, um, they have moved within the county, so, like, they moved from outside the city into the city limits, from one town. Outside the city into the city limits, from one town to another town, from one address to another address within the county. Moves within the county. So if they have moved within the county within thirty days of the election. And then if they moved within the county and voted at their new precinct. But. If they were registered, moved and voted their new precinct, their child deadline. For how long that is, they can vote at their new precinct, so that would be.
So it looks like all of those would be, I don't see any moving within the county that says it's a no.
So this one voted with their new address. This one.
So we have to go through each one of those individually. Can I ask a question? What, when it says partial ballot, that mean, what does that mean they went still out?
So they have to determine that. They voted at the former precinct. The entire hour. Album. They moved more than thirty days. So. Then. What races would have been on the ballot at the old. And basically, county council.
So we need to go through those individually?
Yeah. I don't know. Let's be certain, each one in turn, what was the former precinct called, with the album.
I can tell which, I can tell which ones voted in the correct precinct by the minutes.
Correct precinct.
Like, okay, this one was, um, this one moved and they voted in their new precincts.
Well, that's the case where we have partial ballot.
Registered voter moved to the county, anywhere in the county and voted in precinct, that one just says yes.
It says on either one.
Did they, they included voter registration application there?
Yes.
So. Which ones are those?
I'm going one by one, because each situation is different. So this one voted in their new polling place.
I think that's a yes for sure.
Yes, okay, this person moved from one address. If this person moved to a new address but voted at their old polling place. I have no way of knowing when they moved, because they did not fill that part of it. So I don't know if it's in within thirty days or not.
Registered voter moved within the county anytime before the election, voted at either precinct. Or central location, says it's a yes.
Well, there's no date. Is that what you said, you don't know when they moved?
I don't know. They moved from A.
But this doesn't say that, it says anytime before the election. So these kind of contradict themselves, this says registered voter moved within the county at any time before the election. Voted at either new precinct or central location is a yes.
Yeah, they did their previous, that's when we come down.
And voted at former precinct, that says it's a yes.
And then you have.
With partial ballot.
And then over to the right, there's more. Information, but on that one, she said there's no date of when they moved.
No, they did not, they left that area.
And which precinct did they vote at, the new or the old?
They voted at their old precinct.
Did they do a new voter registration application? Okay. In three, it says registered voter moved anywhere in the county and voted at new precinct. But you said they voted at the older holder.
But then number five says registered voter moved within the county at any time.
If voted at.
I still think that's a yes.
But it says it voted at new precinct or central location, so because he went to the old one.
Okay.
If he would, if he wanted to went to the new one and filled out a new application, then that would have been okay, but because he was the older.
Okay, then that would be partial.
Is that, does that sound right? I'm.
So start a new stack up on top there for partials. Because if the new and the old precinct are the same voting district, then it's not going to change if they're all, the votes are going to count.
Okay, this person was canceled due to the fact that they had not voted and they were sent an N B R A. Um, but they didn't come in to vote and they had a new address, they did not know when they moved to that address. Um, from one town to another town, they voted at the correct polling place from where they live now. They were from Vassar, they moved to Linden.
And they had their registration card?
And they have their registration card.
So to me, that's a yes.
I'm sorry, that's the previous part of one. Right, number seven says registered voter within county more than thirty days, which I think is.
Right.
Without my charting, no, voted at former, former precinct. But then, which is correct, correct?
So that's good then. Partial ballot value that they voted at precinct where they were not registered. Yes.
Okay, so we're moving this one to this pile.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Um, this one, they moved from one town to another and they voted at their new polling place. And they filled out the card, okay? This one, they moved from. They moved within their own precinct, voted at their precinct. Okay? This one, they moved from one city to another city. And they voted in their new polling place.
And they.
They did not specify dates.
So the more that'd be the same one as number seven again. And then they're voting in the new one or the old?
They voted in their new precinct.
So that's the other one moved up, that we talked about.
They stayed within the precinct?
They voted in their new precinct.
They moved anywhere in the county and voted at.
Anytime they voted at their new precinct, sounds good.
Voter has completed new voter registration.
Yes. Anything in the stack doesn't registration part that was stacked, so. So that would be yes.
Number five.
I was looking at three and five, I was looking at three, but.
They're both about the same.
Okay, this person moved, they, I do not know when they moved, but they voted at their new polling place and completed a voter registration mark.
Same ones we've been talking about for a while ago here.
Um, this person moved from one address to another address within the precinct. So they voted in the correct precinct, they also had a name change. So. They completed the voter registration. Part, and I believe that the name change, I'm trying to find that number again, five on the first page. That's, that would be, they voted seven. Have a different name in the poll, but due to marriage, unfortunately, legal proceedings. Number four on the first page, that's a yes.
So that was a yes.
So they had two situations, one, they moved, but they did not change precincts and they voted at the correct precinct. So then they completed voter registration parts, so that would be yes. Two, they changed their name, I don't know what the situation was, but one of the situations, I'm sure. So that they, they completed the voter registration parts, so that would be yes. Do you agree with that very well?
Yes, I do.
I'm reading, okay. Because you said number three. Is that the one?
Different name in the poll, but that's a four.
On the first page.
Due to marriage, divorce, or legal proceedings, and I wouldn't know why this person changed her name, but legally, I don't think you can unless it's on the, I mean, you have legal reason. Something.
Yeah, the name change is not legally right.
Um, we have another move, they completed voter registration form and they voted their new precincts.
Yes.
This one.
Is there a date on that or is that not matter?
No, 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 that's when they did the registration.
They did not do it. There is no date on this one, they did fill out the form and they just moved from, it's like one street to another. And this one also has a name change. So they completed the voter registration part with their new last name and they. Voted in the correct precinct. And then. Um. This person moved from one city to the other city. And they voted in the correct precinct, I, they said they completed that move three thirty-one of twenty-one, but.
It doesn't matter on that one, on the top.
So they were before thirty days.
Correct.
They did their new voter registration.
Registered voter moved within the county at any time and completed new voter registration card, number five.
Ten children, number three, number five.
If they've gone to the new precinct, it doesn't matter if we don't know the date, as long as they're at their new precinct, which is the correct one, and they did the. Voter registration.
So are we, okay, all right, this person moved from one address to the other, they actually advanced, voted in our office. So we had them completed new voter registration card, they moved in twenty-one and they voted the correct ballots. This one is. They moved from one address to another. And they voted in our office and they completed the voter registration card and received the correct ballots.
Wait, is that under the advance? Which ones are those in?
Um, I know. Point is, advance is probably not important, I was just saying that to make sure they had the right ballots. And they did the voter registration part. So Josh, did it not fall under the rules, it was just done in a different place?
It's just because we're the voting, it's an essential voting to be here, so. I don't think the advance made.
Central voting location is our office. Okay, um.
That's the only place they voted at too, because that does all.
Yes.
The registered voter, advanced voter, only.
Right, no, they only voted in our office.
That was in advance.
Yes.
Before Monday.
Yes.
Correct, and they moved.
And they moved, so they came in, what we do is look up on the computer, they say their name is Joe Spoh. We say, Joe, are you still at one, two, three Main Street? And if he says, no, I had three, four, five Elm Street. Then we say, oh, well, you know, or no, or he went one, two, three Main in Linden, and they say, no, I had three, four, five Elm in those age. Then we give them the new voter registration part, that's in the process.
And they were, they said, okay, here, here's my voter registration. All right, and he said, but this is going to be captured.
Right, and we have to do the same procedure, then we're just to pull that pull. Okay. Um, this was an address change and they voted in their new polling place. And I, they completed the card and they voted in nineteen, or they moved in nineteen, sorry. Um, this person also moved, they moved from one city to another, they went to the correct, the correct place to vote, I do not know when they moved. Okay.
So in the event they would, the reason they had to fill these out is because when they get there, their name's not in the correct, the work book, because they didn't.
Right, because they were, and so then now we will remove these from the envelope. And then we will put these into the computer so that, and they'll be in the right book in November and they'll be in the new card. Okay. They were in. One precincts. And this time they voted. In their new. Polling place, and I don't know when their address was established.
But they did a voter registration card?
But they did voter registration card.
What do you mean by address established?
I don't, when they moved there, I don't.
Oh, you just don't know that they.
It says they, residence established, they did not fill that out.
Yeah, I think, I think other. Number three. And they voted at their precinct.
Yes.
Number thirty, that's supposed to catch all of it. Has those conditions within the county. If you're repatriation part, yeah, has the provision of ballot, should, should. Cast once the C P R. Okay, so the registration.
Okay, and this person moved from one street to another street in twenty nineteen, they were both in the same precinct and they voted in the correct location. Um, this person. Moved from one address to another address, they voted in the correct location, I do not know when it was established. But they voted at the correct precinct.
We're just talking about Darwin, so that's good.
Okay. Um, this one voted in their correct precinct, they moved from one city to another city, I don't know a date. They didn't do the voter registration part. Um, this person moved from one address to another address within the same city and the same precinct. They updated their card, I just do not know what date and they voted in the correct place. Um, this person was in. Had the address change, they voted the correct ballot, because they did it in our office, they went through the procedure. They say they moved there in twenty seventeen, so we now have them in the correct, in the correct place. This person moved from one city to another city, they voted. At their old address instead of their new address.
You mean old precinct?
Old precinct instead of their new precincts.
What did they move?
Uh, they did not tell me when they did. They didn't move into their registration card.
So we don't know whether that's within the thirty days or not.
We do not.
So that would be one that is, well, partial ballot, that's correct, Josh.
Yeah, so.
We don't have a date of when they moved.
Right, so all's over six or seven.
But number three doesn't say anything about whether it was at their new or their old precinct.
Three does, it says voted at new, so we have to find one that says voted at wrong.
All's over six or seven.
Yeah, so if you now have a date, they.
So it'd be a partial.
They, they were just south into the county and they're two voting, but right beside each other, two voting, just called in.
So they're probably same precinct anyway.
Registered voter moved within county more than thirty days for election. Former precinct, who was hired at the ballot, ballot.
If it's at the former precinct, so it's, it's a good one.
That says within thirty days though.
No, number seven.
Number seven.
No, number seven.
That there's a date.
So the precincts are. So that's good.
Okay, um, this person moved from one, um, located from one city to another city. They voted in their correct polling place. And, but I do not know the date established, they didn't fill out a registration card. This person also moved from one city to another city. They voted in their new polling place. I don't know the date, they didn't fill out a registration card. This person moved within the city. They voted at their old polling place, but I do not know the date established. And they did fill out a card. So you were saying that those would be full too?
I, yeah, I think they're obviously full.
Are you looking at?
The next one in line is the spouse of that person, that they did, I assume, same last name, same address. Could be a child, uh, and either one of the data established, so.
Say again what the situation was on that one.
Okay, they have moved, they, from one address to another address. They voted in their old polling place.
So it falls back to number seven. Or the whole ballot.
I don't know the date, neither one of them filled out the date.
So that would make it a partial, number seven?
Yeah, but if you read the whole thing, it says if they, they're about, if they voted at the previous one at Council Mall, entire ballot voted. And part, entire ballot valid, they voted at former precinct.
Well, that's six. That's if they moved within thirty days before the election, but it says if they moved more than thirty days, voted at former precinct. Partial, partial ballot valid, it's vote.
But it says entire ballot, entire ballot valid, they voted at former precinct.
Yeah, and then I'm reading the one below it.
That's, I am too. Read number seven, the box is in the comments, entire ballot voted. It's starting again.
That voted out at that precinct for not registered on a bank. Certain states, I think. I think that's referring to voted at either their former or their
So like if they moved from London to Osage, but voted in Newark, right?
No, good problem, yeah.
Because three and five catch the new precinct. Six and seven catch the old precincts. But six and seven, I'm saying partial, it is.
Okay.
Did they do a registration?
Yes, everyone had their registration card with this stack.
Because they voted at the four.
Okay, this person moved and they completed the voter registration part. I do not know when they moved, um, but they voted at their former precincts. This is also voted in, do you have any key going?
Yep.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still confused on why some, this might not be a partial.
So, number three and number five, if they complete the new voter registration application that was down the county. Regardless, when they moved, it's a count if they voted. Six and seven, say they voted, they voted full precinct. Six says thirty days, within thirty days. Seven says more than thirty days. So it doesn't, again, it doesn't matter for if they voted at their former precincts. I, on both of us, since entire ballot, they voted.
Mine says partial. What I'm reading says partial.
Where are you reading?
So on number six, it says entire ballot valid. Number seven, partial ballot valid. Mine says partial.
If they're not currently registered. But they are registered.
Yeah, partial ballot valid and voted ballot at precinct were not currently registered. So because they voted at their old.
But all of these are registered, correct or not correct?
Yeah, what we're saying.
So if it's more than thirty days, they voted at their old precinct. It says partial ballot valid, if voted ballot precinct were not currently registered. So if they registered at their old one, it ends up being a partial?
Hold on, there's a registration card though.
You can do it in special. Either five minutes, six minutes, seven minutes, five minutes, it says.
Do you want to?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion, we, attorney client.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion, we have a, a, executive session for attorney client privilege. Exactly, we're going to executive session, it's not to the attorney client privilege, except for the Kansas Open East Act for matters deemed confidential under the attorney client privilege for a period of five minutes. I'll say return to this room at nine forty. All those, I, I. Do you have those? Somebody print those?
Yes.
You have. We have. Just kind of, it's a drag. So back there. First one, question. It's three seconds. It's supposed to go first. Catching.
Yes.
It says something. And they moved. Some people. Once. Don't keep your.
That's what. It's their thing. What about that? I don't know. Yeah. It's like just. I'm saying. But. I have done it since I was young.
So.
I would have had, if we had something, I would have, I would have had to. For the, the council, you know, those.
Correct.
In town, but actually not now. I'm still.
Everything is still the same. Everything is still the same, so. Oh.
Next. Sure. Maybe I'll, if it's asking. You're. I don't know. If I think that's, they should be looking up your.
Yeah.
Exactly. So what can I ask you? So if I'm in a precinct, if I'm in district one, and I moved to a precinct. Let's just say that after. When can I? Let's say I moved out of office, for instance. To district two, and I still go back in district one. For thirty days, you're back in former precinct for thirty days.
Yeah, but that's what they're talking about, it's, it doesn't matter. Well, that's, I mean, that's. So you kind of could go and leave your place. Really?
Say, would you go to either one of them?
I mean, that's. That's not what I believe, but.
Oh.
Right, but I think that's what it kind of sounded like if. And if, like, if they go in to vote, like, if you go in to vote and they say, can you give your name and your address, and they don't find you? Like, you have to, they, you can call in and find out where your current precinct is.
Yeah, because they should, they have already gave you a ballot if they can't find the correct.
Right, unless, I mean, permission. Right, unless it was permission. Yeah, we have. Which is what all these are.
You know, because maybe I want to look through Fred, Fred died, and I'm going to say, I just. You don't have to live there at any length of time, as long as it's one day.
Well, as long as you honestly live there, though. If you don't honestly live there, then problem. I mean, I don't, I don't know, have any way of knowing where people actually reside at night. We have a lot of issues about that, like, no register somewhere, where people say they actually live somewhere, you know, spend the night somewhere else. Well, we don't know.
Yeah, just a lot.
You try, let's just say, let's just say I work at the department or house in Portland. And I do it just so I can vote for.
Yeah.
That room, I can still move back.
Yeah.
That's, that's tough to tell.
Yeah, it seems like if you, if you move and you could go to either precinct to vote, no matter the time limit, that, that's where it's a little weird. Because then you can kind of choose, like, well, I could go to my new one if it's going to count, or I could go to my old one if it's going to count. Because there's no time limit, so that, that is kind of a a dueling, a statue.
Right, right, yeah.
It's just like somebody get in the car somewhere and they, they don't want to pay the hot coffee tax, so they.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, they test.
Yeah.
I love the highlights. Sorry. But go in. It's like. Yeah, I can support it. Pretty scary, but. So long. Because we don't check that number like.
Yeah, the voter. Five.
Five?
Yeah. You have this.
Okay. So. She wrote, she asked, Jay speaks up a little. Because he had a, or pronunciations a little.
Yeah.
He talks back to him.
Yeah.
Jay, yes.
Would you quote your mom? The gerbil staff, the old, that's.
Yes.
Have to, it's a lot more.
It was actually working most of Saturday, trying to get the rest finished, because we went and printed, you know, all paperwork to show.
Everything. Yeah. Is this something exceptional in the law?
Well, this, there were a lot of people voted this time, I think, a lot of people voted, have a voting, a lot of online work, have a voting. You know, I just kind of, just a lot of people on this one.
Yeah, that's not the portion that will be.
I think that's the problem.
Is that any political ballots are small things?
Oh, probably about that. I mean, this isn't like.
You've done what?
Not that.
Probably about a tracker.
Show that they have. A little.
That's something.
I mean. What about advanced ballots? Now, did you, are those already? Those were counted on election night, they're the first group to meet.
Those are the first ones.
What about the name, is that advanced? Yes. So you get many after the, like, their postpart day of election. We, we had.
Six, so.
We had six of them that were after, and then we had four of them that were between, and we have to open this and report it to the Secretary of State's office each day. Oh, every day they come here? That on that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Okay. And I think they both, like, reported a total number of five of those four were questioned. Yeah. We had a lot of people who were, they were totally surprised, you know, I thought it, I mean, I guess I'm, I mean, why? So if I fully didn't. No, were they, were they not just unaffiliated? They were unaffiliated, but they could have affiliated and voted without that, or they could have just voted for Bush certainly. And when we gave them that option, they were like, no, this question, I mean, I'm like, okay, you're right. Yeah, that's.
How many do you know, sir?
Well, they're, they claim they're ready to get it. Yeah, they, there were a lot, and I, and I, and I understand that now. I have a friend who I was talking to about it, and she suggested I listen to a podcast, and so I got the time to listen to the podcast. Um, so the thing she was telling me was they, you know, the, my thought is chance to tell you my whole opinion, I can tell you my, you don't want to vote everything. But there's this, there, they don't want to vote for a party, they just want the questions, so, you know, that, I mean, it doesn't make a difference, but it just.
So they just get a ballot that doesn't pass the question.
Yes, yes, that, that surprised me, you know, if you have, if you give them.
I would say that these things then.
But as far as, there could be some other question I would need here.
Okay, but what if they moved, you, you made comments between, like, this city and that city. What if they moved this city to that city and they were different house districts?
That's a cool.
And how do you know that, to make that partial, is that?
Well, they, so far they've said that's a partial.
Is that what would qualify as a partial? That's what I'm confused about, when it would be a partial, when it would be. And by partial, what do we tell these about? That only part of the ballot counts?
Correct.
And what part doesn't count? The part that doesn't buy where they now.
Right, right.
And who do, how do you do that when you put it in a machine?
No, you have to do it by hand.
Okay, so you tally it out, okay.
So, so when it, then it comes there. What problem would they get?
They would be told you're unaffiliated, or non, non, no party. And then he was affiliated with a party that you wanted, but the question only valid.
So they could say, I want a Democrat.
Right, right, and they fill out a part, and then they are that party. Absolutely, they're that party until they come back and change it. So like they say, I want a Democrat ballot, and they're, they want to affiliate Democrat, they fill out the part, the pink part that comes back and does change to Democrat. They're Democrat until they come back and change it, either back to unaffiliated or, you know, whatever. Libertarian.
Okay. What, I know you were in your training one day, what happens if one of those people working at the, the?
Polling, like.
What do they call it, voter, what, what do they?
Pollers. Pollers.
Pollers, sure. They could sway, hey, if you, Democrat, you can vote for this person. Are they supposed to?
I, that's, that's the, that's the. I was saying, they have the option, affiliated in the whole ballot or not, so the question. Sorry. Yes, please.
Okay, Josh, let them know what we figured out.
Thank you for our patience. One. One issue that we have to figure out under the law is if they voted at the former precinct and they did a new voter registration card, but they confirmed on the ballot, or on an envelope, written on, they, but they moved more than thirty days. That's when we have a, and they voted at their former precinct. That's when we, we have a partial ballot.
So you need to start that.
So we think we can just look at the dates.
Yeah.
If there's a date on there, we're.
If there's a date on there, we're not gonna presume any dates, but if there's a date on there saying that they definitely moved before thirty days, or after thirty days.
Yeah, that's the ones we might Google out, there might be one in there.
Okay, so this, they voted at their former precinct, there is no date on.
That's good, that's good.
Okay, this one, they voted at their former precinct. No date on.
That's good.
Okay, this one, uh, they voted their new polling place.
That's good.
This one, they voted at their new polling place, this one, they voted at their new, no, sorry. That's in the wrong, okay, this one, they voted at their old polling place, I have no date. Okay, this one, um, they voted at the correct polling place, at their new polling place, this one, they voted at their new polling place. This one, um, they voted at their new polling place. This one, they voted at their new polling place, this one, they voted at their new polling place, this one, they voted at their new polling place, this one, new polling place, this one, um. Voted at their new polling place, this one voted at their new polling place, this one voted at their new polling place. This one voted at their new polling place. This one voted at their new polling place, this one voted at their new polling place, this one voted at their new polling place, this one voted at their polling place, new. 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 This one voted at their old polling place, and they do not have a date. Okay, this one voted at their, um. Okay, this one voted at their new polling place, no date, this one voted at their new polling place, no date. Okay, are we ready to proceed? And she was asking if you could speak up.
I speak up?
Yes, if you can speak up. Okay.
Sure.
Um, this person. They voted at their old polling place, and I do not have a date. Okay, this one moved, they moved at their. Old polling place, they vote, they moved in twenty twenty one.
That is a partial.
That's a partial.
Are then, you know what, it wouldn't change if they're in the same precinct, it wouldn't matter then. If it's in the same voting district, it's not gonna matter.
If it's identical, you mean for that case?
County race, or?
From one city to another.
But are they in the same district or not?
This one.
It's like if you live in London and Melbourne, you're in the same voting district.
Okay, but this one moved from Osage City to London, and they went back to Osage City to vote.
That's a partial.
And this one, um. Went to their new, or their old address, their old polling place, and they moved six twenty eight of twenty two. So that would be like thirty three days. Okay. Um, this person moved from one side of town to the other side of town, they voted at their old polling place, but I do not have a date.
That's good.
This person voted with, moved actually within the precinct, I do not have a date, um, this person moved within the precinct. Um, it says one, one of twenty two, but they moved from one address or one street to another street within the town. So the other location, the southern location would be exactly the same. Okay, um, this person. But moved from one side.
You know what, that might not be right, because Osage City is split in half if it's in Osage City.
This is London.
Okay, you're fine, they've been. Right, but what I'm saying is, Osage City's cut in half, so if it's in that city, it would, it would be different.
Okay, um, this one, they moved from one address to another address, they voted at their new, no. They voted at their. Old, their former precinct, but I do not have a date. Okay, all right, um, and this one is the same one, it's. This one is the same story, because it's spouts from one address to the other, and they did not. Um, this one moved within the old place, and they lived in the same town in the same, they just moved streets, they did not move a date. This one moved within the town, they. Would have been the same precinct, there is no date. This one moved from one side of town to the other side of town, but we do not have a date.
Same precinct?
No, different precinct. They voted in their new precincts.
That's good.
Okay, this one, they moved from one city to another city, they voted for their, at their new address, and they say they voted and moved in twenty one. Okay, this one moved from one ward to, actually, they moved within a ward in Osage City, they voted in their correct ward, and we don't know what they, they moved just from one street address to another street address. Uh, this one moved from one town to another town, they, or they vote, so they moved from one town to another town, different precincts, they voted in their new precinct, and they said they did it one, one of twenty two.
But they voted in their new precinct? They're good, and a registered card.
Yes, they're registered, this one moved from one address to another address within the same city, which is all one precinct for that city, I do not know when they did it. Okay, this one moved from one town to another town, they voted, um. This one, this one's. This person moved from an address in one town to an address in another town, but they voted in the third town, okay?
That's a no completely.
Wrong area, and I have no way of knowing.
That's, that's a no.
So they, yes, or. That was what I would say. Okay, it was in the county, I do not know when, they moved from the south, moved to county to the, to Oberkirk, at the north end of the county, but they voted in permanent.
It's neither, it's the wrong.
Neither address.
It's the wrong address completely.
And.
And they, okay, so partial for the Milburn address. And there's no question that their precinct would be held, because they live within the state limits of Oberkirk.
Did they complete it?
Yes, but I don't know when they did, I don't know when they did.
I think that it's, so it's partial, it's not, it's not a reject, but it needs to be paired with. Their new.
So it goes in that stack.
Do you think this was on the ridge weight ballot that would have been on the health ballot? Could be counted, okay?
No, it wouldn't be counted, would it?
Do you think?
There would be, which one are you gonna count, the new address or the old address? So you count the new address, okay.
Cause they, they updated their voter registration, that's their correct precinct now. Pair what they cast with what they're doing.
So it's more of a question on they voted at the wrong precinct, so what's the rule on that?
They voted at the wrong precinct. They voted within the county.
Right, but my question is, what's the rule on when you vote at the wrong precinct?
I think that's where we, when we get down to seven. You say twenty five, that's thirty, one, two, three. Which states.
Where they're not currently registered.
Registered voter has cast provisional ballot intended for precinct. Other than the precinct to which the voter resides, but located within the same county. The canvassor shall count the votes for those officers, offices, or issues which are identical in both precincts.
Good.
The canvassor shall not count the votes for those offices or issues which differ from the. Offices or issues appearing on the ballot against the precinct in which the voter resides, so the voter resides is the new, new voter registration.
So anything that's in that area that voted on?
Yes.
Good. So that would be a partial.
Okay, and that's right, okay, so now we're out to this, um, this person moved within the county, they went to their old precinct to vote, and I do not know a date established.
That's good.
Yeah. This person, um, moved within the county, they went to their old precinct to vote, and they say they moved there on nine twenty eight of twenty twenty one. Um, this one, they moved within the county, they went to their old precinct to vote, and I do not know a date established. Okay, this one, they moved within the county, they voted at their new polling place, they completed their part, and I do not know a date. This person moved within the county, um, they voted at their old precinct, and they say that they established residence there on, um, eleven of twenty twenty. Um, this person moved from one location to another location, they voted in their old location, they say they moved on seven, seven of twenty two. So seven, seven of twenty two would be within thirty days, so they would be followed, okay? Um, this person is from one address to another address, they do not know when they moved, they voted at their new polling place. Okay, this person is from one address to another address, um, they say they moved on seven. Seven of twenty two, they're the same last name as that other person just did, so. Okay, um, they, this is moved from one address to another, they voted at neither location, and they say they established it on, uh, twelve eighth of twenty twenty one. So they started at the wrong place, they just voted at the wrong place, okay? Um, let's see, moved from one address to another address in the county, from one city to another, they voted at their new polling place, and I don't know a date established. This person also, this is the same last name as this person, and they did not, oh, they, but ten, one of twenty. So they moved from one address to another address, voted at their new address, but they said they established it in twenty twenty ten.
Right, I think that's the situation. That if they voted at their new place and they completed a registration application.
Old. Okay. Um, this one is whether new, they voted at their new polling place, and I don't know when they moved. This one also moved, um, they voted in their new polling place, I don't know when they moved, okay? So these are your partials and these are your yeses, okay? On this.
Can we, um, just take break and do a motion to count the, the full ones?
Okay, you want, you wanna know how many there are?
Yep.
Okay.
You wanna vote the motion to approve those, all right, we wanna know the numbers first.
Combined with this.
Right. So once you guys know that number, I'll make that motion. Fifty? Some, you wanna recount? No, it was a partial.
They lived in one town, they moved to, they voted in parking, so there's three different locations in the county.
I'll put this on the mic too.
So.
So I'll make the motion, we approve. The fifty provisional ballots with the address changes.
Those are full counts.
Full counts. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all for the same sign, motion carries. Should we do the partials real quick, I'll put them over here.
Yeah, move, move the partials.
Six, so I'll make the motion, we approve the six partials. Uh, counts of provisional ballots of the address changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Certification, when you say approve those, you were saying.
To count. Yes, yes, correct, that's why they're not a full or a partial. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all for the same sign, motion carries, okay?
Okay, now we have a name change that they did not change address. Um, and I have one, two. Three. Four, five of those. Which were. So they just had a name change.
So it says they count unless there's an invalid reason for, unless there's some other reason why they'd be invalid.
Cause they all were voted in the correct precinct, they just haven't moved.
Okay, so they would all be good. So here, we'll just do these, we'll get these out of the way too, I'll make the motion, we approve the name change provisional ballots as full ballots. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all for the same sign, motion carries.
This person was inactive due to being suspended, they were sent a confirmation notice, and it came back, um, they were registered. So we have them registered, but they were inactive or they were registered, they were registered in one town, they now have moved to another town. They say they moved to that new location in August of twenty twenty one. Um, but we were showing that it's suspended, not registered in our system.
So that almost be like a new registration. Is that what you're saying?
So can you register the day of?
No.
So.
Did you catch that one, or?
Okay, so Josh, this person was inactive in our system, they even sent a confirmation notice, and it came back to us, so they were, um. Inactive in our system, at one address, okay, so at a carbon deal address, they now, wait a minute, no. A Burlingame address. At a Burlingame address, six, six, four, one, three, that's Burlingame, okay, we have them registered in a Burlingame address. They were, now they say they live in Carbondale, and they say that change took place on August twentieth of twenty twenty one.
New world precinct.
They voted at their new polling place.
But, but they were not an active voter, so this was a brand new registration.
But they were registered, that's correct.
And you register, they were registered.
Yeah, inactive.
So they were registered, they were.
Yeah, right, I don't, I think it must have purged.
Okay, okay.
They're registered.
Okay, so we just, we just pulled them out differently, you're gonna say this is a full yes.
I just have a question, what does inactive mean? So they were labeled inactive?
They didn't vote.
Right, like, if they didn't vote and then we reset a card and we got it back.
So you say they didn't vote, like, for how long have they not voted?
Two general elections. Then I don't know if, let me, let me see the history on that one.
How it works is the inactive status is probably an informal tagging system within the county clerk's office that will give them notice that you may be purged in a future election if you don't update your registration, and so that, that inactive is not really what we have.
Not.
Not a link.
Okay, so they would be full.
That'd be a full one.
All right, um, this person was inactive, they were registered at the correct address, they went to wrong precinct to vote, um, and they, I do not know when they moved to that address.
Former or new or.
They went to their former precinct to vote, and I don't have a date.
System.
They would be, yes, okay, um, and this person filled out a card, and they said the date established was twenty nineteen. So that would be partial, okay, they were their old, they were at. Yes, they were at their old precincts. Okay, um, this person is another one that has, um, moved from one precinct to another, they moved one, six, one, of twenty two.
That'd be a partial.
Okay, um, this one did not have a date, so I cannot say when they moved. Um, this one. I don't have a date, so I can't say, okay, this one is.
Where are the, where are those last two voting there?
They're voting at their.
New precincts.
New precincts.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so this one is kind of a unique situation, this one had, if you look at accounts, so they were registered in, twice in the system, and they were later leaked, when we figured out it was the same person. So their accounts weren't leaked until after the date of registration, they were always registered in the correct place, they have not moved. It was basically our office, it was an error by our office that these accounts were not leaked, the voter did everything correct, they have not moved.
So it should be good.
So it was a clerk's office error. Okay, um, this was another, this one, they had been filled out a card, he had been, we went back and made copies of his original registration, where he registered with a party, when the records were pulled into Elvis in nineteen eighty eight, it merged, no, he registered in nineteen eighty eight, when it was pulled into Elvis in two thousand and five, it pulled him in as not affiliated, and he, um, should have been affiliated by this old card, um, so it was our error that he was not affiliated with the right party, but he did vote the correct ballot and filled out another location, so this is part error.
So he's given a non-affiliated ballot.
So they called in and we were able to find it, we were able to find this card, we went back to his firm and filed and said, yes, he should have gotten the right ballot. What, what? He was in, um, no. Something we can't.
That's accepted.
There, send those down, let's approve all these that we have currently, so we don't get them all mixed up, wrong.
This is the count all.
And this, I'll make a motion that we first of all approve the inactive one, uh, there's a one full count. I'm doing it, because I'm doing them by groups, but this was only one in that group. It's all in favor, say aye.
I, I spent a second.
Oh, there's a, aye. So, Carrie, is, okay, this one is for, correct that, well, there's some different kinds in here. The main law was registration or parts, right? So I'll make a motion to approve all of these on the provisional ballots on clerk error or wrong party affiliation, whatever. There are five.
That was, there was some of the news in there, but we wanted to talk where it was, there's a long period that was our error.
Yeah, I was just reading the front note.
Yeah.
So do I hear a second on that?
Just add that as a clear error, and.
Okay. So like that way, so do I have a second on that? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all post same sign, not much carries.
I'm going to read my bit from the, from the four, afterward he could vote in this precinct, was told that he was at the wrong location. It was too late for him to get to the right location, so he voted there. So he should have voted in Valley Park, and he voted in Michigan Valley, he should have voted in Baxter, and he voted in Michigan Valley. And I don't know what, there's no time on these, but apparently it was too late in the day for him to make it from over to in, so I would think partial.
That'd have to be a partial.
Is there one that just says, votes at wrong person, precinct?
But it still shows within county, so. Right.
So we, partial, so anything local would be, would count.
Right, so that's still the, uh, KSA twenty five, that's thirty two feet three per year, that isn't limited to. Voter. It's all state includes, whenever, it says, when a registered voter has cast provisional ballot intended for a precinct other than a precinct that is required to sign, so it's.
That's not linked to if they moved, if they just moved the wrong precinct.
Yeah, then it's.
So.
So, partial. All right, this one, uh, they changed their address after seven twelve, so they were not registered in the correct place. They voted in their new precinct, and they completed a voter registration card, but they do not have a date.
That's good.
Okay, um, right, this one, they changed, they went to their old polling place, and they say they moved on four, one, of twenty two. So it was more than thirty days.
That'd be a partial.
Uh, this one is inactive, so we decided that that doesn't make any difference, they did move from one location to another location. Um, they say they moved in oh, eight, maybe that's what it says, I don't know what that number is for sure. Um, we had them registered at one address, which was South Valley Park, the address he now lives at is. We had him at, South Valley Park, the address he now lives at is also in South Valley Park. So he's within the same precinct, just a different address, and he voted, he filled out a voter registration card, but it's been more than thirty days.
But it's on the same precinct, so it's, it's full.
All right, um, this one, the person was registered in one side of a town and moved to the other side of town, um, she said she did that on six, one, of twenty two.
Same precinct.
No, it's from South Valley Park to North Valley Park.
But they're, they're all in the same thing, are they not, valid?
Well, I mean, they would have the same precinct.
That's true, I guess that's true on that. So it'd be a partial.
Six, one, so.
It'd be a partial.
She voted this, she voted her new one or old one?
Um, hold on. The signature is south, and her new, her old address is south, so she voted in her old person.
If.
All right, um, four, one, so they moved from one ward of those six to another ward of those six, they completed the voter registration card, they say they did that in twenty twenty, and they voted at their old polling place, okay?
Is that, what ward number, because it may be the same precinct.
Um, it's one and three.
One and three are the same.
So they're not the same.
One and three are the same, aren't they? I was thinking two, no, one and four, two and three are different.
Yes, one and four, one and three, so this one moved within a precinct, and they voted in that precinct, so it's just one precinct, and I don't know where it's. All right, um, this one, they moved from one precinct to another precinct, um, we don't know a date, and they voted in their new precinct, okay? This one, she was registered, wrong election. Okay, so this one, she was not sent, she was not sent an advanced ballot, when she should have been, which was bar error, because we selected the wrong election and did not send a ballot to her, she went to the polling place and voted her correct ballot on the correct time. She did not, they were advanced, she did not vote in advance, it was never sent, we can prove that.
So it's good.
Okay, all right, um, this one was sent an advanced ballot, and she, um, the ballot was never returned. So she voted at the polling place, and her advanced ballot will not return to us.
So both of those would mean they were sent, well, the second one was she was sent to advance, but she did not use it.
Right. In fact, there are one, two, three, four, five of them that were sent advanced ballots, and they did not come back to us, but they did not return their ballots to us, and they voted at the whole.
Those are, those are counts, the, the point you need to confirm, if they didn't constitute.
Right, and we did.
And you've already got, so those are all good.
Okay, so is it okay?
Yeah, hand all these down, so we can get those cleared out, so we get them all on the right ones.
This is the full.
Just a second.
So the half of them, the person who you were writing.
Number one is.
That just says they didn't receive it, but in this case, we don't have confirmation.
Yeah.
They just think they got a ballot.
The prohibition is against double voting.
And we can prove that they did not have a date of ballot account.
But I'll go back to that.
So we're good? All right, so I'll make a motion, we approve the. He already talked about it, I mean, we're looking for ways to count votes, not not count votes, and that's what we just talked about, is that not correct, Doc? You said these are counted.
I mean, that's, that's, I would have been my understanding, I don't have proof at this point, I'm happy to, happy to try to find that.
All right, so I'll make a motion, we approve the advanced ballots that were never done as a double vote, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the ones.
You say, so when someone gets advanced ballot, what happens on the whole side?
I mean, if it comes back to us, then we have it, but like, if they decide they did, they could have brought it back in and it was spoiled, I don't know that for gospel on those, but we also know what was received advanced and what wasn't, so, you know, I don't know, they could have voted it tomorrow, or sent it in next week, but as of election night, we counted the advanced ballots, they were not counted as a base.
All right, so KSA twenty five, that's twenty nine oh eight, subsection half that says, a voter who has received an advanced voted ballot named voter provisional ballot on election day after precinct polling place where the voter resides, if the voter returns the advanced ballot, voting ballot to a judge or clerk after precinct polling. Any such advanced voting, any such provisional ballot shall be counted only if the county board can determine provisional ballot properly casted, and the voter has not otherwise voted in such a way.
And you said you've already verified that, not been.
By looking at the advanced voter list, that they did not, their vote was not counted, they did not, we did not receive it back to the mail, we can see things were received back to the mail, we mark on the computer, so let's just say this group comes up in today, and it, let's say it was last week, last Sunday, this group comes in last Monday, we go in and say received and the date, so if those people would have mailed one in, it would have shown received on their voter record when we went in and went through those after Tuesday.
Unless it's received by name, it's checked off.
Yes, yes, so if Susie Q Smith's ballot comes in, and we, that's a bad, it could be too Susie Q there. Uh, Zachariah McGillicuddy comes in, we mark him as we received that ballot, so if we have another ballot in Zachariah, and we wouldn't there, it's gonna show it, his ballots aren't received.
So these were cross-checked?
Yes, yeah, because everybody else shows their information, correct, when it comes back. Yes, yes, but their voter number, so if it was this Smith, I sent it to Susie Q Smith, we actually do it by the number on.
All right, so I'll make a motion again, that we approve the provisional ballots of the advanced ballots that were sent but never returned. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all post same sign, motion carries, there was ten of those, by the way, they voted by skim count.
This is one, two, three, four, that we have searched by name, and we've searched by date of birth, and we have searched by driver's license, and we cannot find when they were registered anywhere, so like the other ones that I showed you, for Johnny and Beverly and all that, we, we can see them registered, but if we look under all those things, and they're just not registered at all, we can assume they're not registered in safety handles, because there are four of those. But now, they did, we voted at the section part, so they will be registered and tabled to vote member.
So those would be theirs.
That's what I believe, yes.
Because basically.
I think that's right, because they wouldn't have, they would have done. So put those in your no folder over there.
That's, this is a no, this is a no, that is a possible.
That's number seven on the first.
Okay, this was another one that was, um, in suspense, but, or inactive, um, and they have a new address, they voted at their old address, but we do not know the date established.
So that would be good. Yeah, that'd be a good one.
This one, um, this, there's a lot of some marks to be, this person is not registered.
On that last one, can we go back to that last one, get, where did they vote at?
They voted in their new polling place.
Okay, that's all I'm mentioning.
Okay, so, and I may not accept that either.
That's all I'm mentioning.
This person was not registered, in two thousand and three, they canceled, we showed they moved out of the county in two thousand and three, but apparently they moved back into the county, but we don't have any record of that, they were not registered here, we do not have a date that they established residence, and they did complete a new voter registration card, they should, they, and they voted in the correct place, but we did not have them registered, they were canceled, moved out of our county into. They, and they voted in the correct place, but we did not have them registered, they were canceled, moved out of our county in 2003.
So that's the situation we're talking about, the difference between being inactive or submerged.
And this is moved out of the county, so when somebody moves within the city of Kansas, just for the sake of the Kansas, we're knowing this. If I move from Osh County to Douglas County, they can go in and pull my registration, so they just pulled me into Douglas County. So when they move to another county, that's how that usually works. They will not register back in our, they will move out of our county in 2003.
They legally were taken off the mark.
Right.
Right, and they never got placed on before July.
Right. So that would happen. Okay, so this person registered before they turned 18. They were in suspense to turn 18, she was underage, and she's been suspended until birthday, which was 7/28. Um, but, the, when she registered, she has a different address than what she has now. So what we had was in one town, she registered, before she turned 18, she registered in one city. And then on election day, she voted in another city. She was 18 after election day, so, I mean, this.
So at 18, age doesn't matter, that, that's interesting, she turned, but.
Okay, so.
She voted in their new precinct.
She, okay, so she registered, let's see when she voted. Um, she voted at her old precinct.
So that would be good, because she's within 30.
Which is what she registered at, but. So, at where she registered at would have been North Valley Park, okay? The address she filled out on election day would have been faster. She voted in South Valley Park.
Do we know when she voted? When did she register?
The first time she registered was on 5/4/22. So they.
So it's going to pass there.
In her birthday.
No, we don't know that, we don't, so we still.
Um, after they, it is.
I think that's good. Isn't that good?
7/28.
I think that's good.
Okay, so you're going to accept the whole thing?
Yes.
Alright. Um, name change, not registered, new last name, search, they, we searched under the driver's license to find her, and we found her as um, registered under the old last name, so. And she filled out the new card in her new last name. We found her under her old last name by using her driver's license number. She voted in. Okay, and she did not change precinct, I'm trying to make this more understandable than it is, so the only thing this one had was a name change. Okay?
So that's good, because we don't know why they're not registered.
These just have different stories to them, so that's why they're in different piles. Okay.
Yeah, hand those down, Heather, we'll get those out of the way. So we got one, two, three. Uh, I'll make a motion, we approve, or we count the provisional ballots for the name change, the registration on the age, and the suspension. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, and there was three of those, if anybody's keeping count.
This person registered on 7/13, they had a date of 7/12. And they moved from out of state. Okay. Um, this one registered after the deadline, um, after the deadline they registered, right? Um. They registered online on 7/12, but we did not receive it until 7/14. And, so it was not pulled into our system, because it was not received by us until 7/14.
That one.
That one, because they, they attempted on 7/12.
And that was on the state side.
Because that, yeah, that's, you've got several of these, which, like, their registration date says 7/12, but the transaction date that they show in the system was 7/29.
But the date 7/12 is from the state of Kansas?
Yes, yes.
I think all those would count.
Okay, so I've got two of those. Uh, this one was, um, registered transaction date of 7/29. This one actually shows the transaction date of 7/29, but does not show. They tried to register. But the transaction date is 7/29.
Yeah.
That's about right.
Uh, this one is a registration transaction date of 7/12, or 7/28, sorry. 7/28 on this one, this one was 7/12, but not transferred to us until 7/14.
That's good.
It's what, not even that, okay. Um, this one was a 7/12, but we did not receive it till 7/14. 7/12, we did not receive it until 13. Um, not registered in Q, registration date 7/12, but not transferred to us until 7/14. Uh, this one says not registered at all, deadline we register, this one we have nothing, we, they were not registered. We don't have anything from the state to register them, and we don't know what date they did, where they are. Okay. Uh, this one shows a transaction date of 7/13, that's when it was received by the state, so that was after the 12th.
Correct.
Okay, this one shows a transaction date of 12, and not released to us until 14. This person registered after the deadline, okay?
Okay, hand those down, Heather. I'll make a motion, we approve the provisional ballots of the seven that had the transaction data 7/12, but didn't show up in our system, the 7/14. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, there are seven of those.
And these are from different places all over the county. These people, we show were registered, there's no problem with their voter registration. Whether they were just overlooked when they came in to vote, we don't know, usually, we always ask them to call us. Some of these places got busy, they didn't get a chance to call us. Um, there was one where we showed that they were unaffiliated, and she just made a note of that, something to that. I don't think that makes any difference, but we were just trying to make notes as we could. But these people were all registered in the right place, voted in the right place, through no mistake of their own, were they provisional? Why, if they were in the right place, why is it? I don't know, but we took a copy of the registration part, we took a copy of the poll book showing that they were there. They did sign in. So they just, they didn't find them there, the poll workers didn't find them. Oh, for finding. Right, right, so. So there was, they were, like I said, there was a couple from the north end of the county, there was a couple from the south end of the county, there was just different places. Right, there's. Did you have a copy that they were in the correct place? Yes, yes, we've made copies very, with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And they were in the correct poll book. And they were in the correct poll book, they were in the correct place.
That's under, uh, D, other. On registered vote, name was found by county election officer.
So those are all good? So I'll make a motion, we approve the provisional ballots of the folks that had their cards that didn't show up, or whatever the word, however you all word that.
They were not found.
Not found in the.
Not originally found. Not originally found. Overlooked and correct.
Okay, for those eight.
What? Well.
Elsewhere, they just found elsewhere.
They were there. Well, that's what I just asked her, she said with each of those, she has a photocopy of their name in the correct poll book.
It could have just been overlooked earlier.
Yeah. We had that issue where there was a draw, we know that.
I'll re-change my motion, I'll make a motion, we approve the provisional ballots that their addresses were in the book, but they were not found at the time of the poll. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Eight, I think, so I showed 93, and then you got some more partials there, too. Let's, yeah, let's do the partials.
Well, you moved those as partial ballots.
Right. I'll make a motion, we approve this group of partial ballots. There are six of these that will need to be hand counted, because they're in different, um, locations. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. So Josh, do you have like 12 partials right now? Is that all of them on? So before you count, before you open it, just count them and see what you're counting. We'll verify how many we got before we get going. I need one, too, Rhonda. I'll need one, too, Rhonda, I can't find mine. There you go. 28. Here's two more, that'll give you 30. Alright, so, you got, we're missing some here, because I showed 93, and now we're only showing 92. That's my numbers off, 54, 61, 62, 67, 72, 82, 85. Was there seven on that last one, or eight on that last count? I think that's where the, I think that's where it's at. Nine, three, there's your third one. Nine, three, one, it's. So what's it? Nice one, Heather gets back, now when we open these, you want to keep, we take the ballot out. Because you do not want to take anything off that envelope. So you're going to need a little room. You just, I can just, yeah, it is. Uh, opener. Found one. Do you have any extras? You got one for yourself? You got another one, Rhonda? Alright, so, again, open them, keep the ballots in one stack, the envelopes, don't tear anything off of them, put them in a different stack upside down.
So, did the number come out correct?
Yes. Rhonda, it doesn't matter which way the ballot goes. Right, when we're done, we'll count them. So what do you want us to do with this?
It's a ballot, it's an available.
So we just put it here? You got one, too? I think I'm going to start a different stack for those, because those might get lost, I'm going to run it to count. About two hands at work. So somebody's have a full page of that, this questionnaire. I'm looking at that. Yeah. Ron, I got a question for you. Nice note something you've got on all these.
Because there's a write-in line. So on the Democrat Party, there isn't a candidate, so they can write people.
Oh, these are Democrats.
Right. That one says Democrat. You might have Democrat, you might have a, that's Republican.
Okay, that's.
That's Republican.
Nevermind, I just have no idea what the hell's going on here.
Well, if they couldn't get them to seal, if they were old or something, they probably need a tape. Maybe they just didn't want to look at.
Did you? Yeah, your ballots in there. Heather, your count. Hey, we're just still this room, so we'll get it back somewhere. So hand me your ballots. Count your envelopes. So we got the counts of the. So you want me to put all these together? There are sixty-three of them.
You have a total count?
Ninety-three is the total count. Does Rhonda, these other envelopes, you want these just back on your? It's it. We're gonna need the ballot. So.
I, I have to get some down in the DVD to take minutes.
So let's just take ten minute recess.
I think if we just take them upstairs and pull the sample ballot, you know, get the differences. I'm just set these right here. I am going to take just a couple second break.
So we'll pull that sample ballot.
Anything that's the same.
This one needs to sit back out and sit in random order. So I believe. I mean, I don't see any that are double voted. I don't think that one's completely filled in correctly. There may be too much white there and they got out with the. So, but the machine will not read it.
You go by the intent.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, so I just keep up with those other ones.
It could be fully counted. But I mean, it's clear they voted and they did, I think it's over voted.
So basically, we'll need to do a. What would it say? Where they are. You got those? Is there a question? Is that goes on there yet?
He would like to feel, do the comparison ballot so we know what's going to count.
We're not agreeing that way.
It's like it could be question. So this one is no party, so the whole ballot would count.
You probably already know.
This one is, this says Republican, so I'm going to trust that that is correct. There's a party on that one. There's a party on that one. Is this, I don't know what's in this envelope. Oh, and it's got to use, so I'm going to assume it's question only. Okay, so these could be opened and put to the machine so they could add to it. Because I'm going on, it says. So, they could add that because I'm going on, it says NP, no party. And I'm going on, it says. You, unaffiliated. And it to Linda and Evan, so I'm not taking these upstairs. And this person voted twice on the governor's race. So, I will put it on our in-capture.
Yes.
You gotta make that motion.
This one says unreadable marks also. Oh, I think it's because they've started coloring a little bit there, so it says unreadable marks on this. So, this is the third. Linda, here's two more.
Very good. Accept them.
Okay, so these two. Are gonna.
It's not much to see.
At least enough.
So, once I'm tabulating, then what?
No wonder the head count.
We have. Red ninety-two, we have three that wouldn't go through as that crack is there, and you have the little ninety-five. Yes.
We had a total of ninety-three.
Counted ninety-two.
Only have one to pass that. Plus, oh, plus two, yes, ninety-five would be the number. As a two provisionals of our. All right, so we have one, two. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So, how, we need to, okay, this is all but except precinct. So, should we just open them and write them down on a piece of paper?
We have same votes.
Did you want me to bring down?
I just need to know what races.
Well, this says all except precinct, so let's just open.
What I thought when we do the. I thought it's this report that it has to come from upstairs. So, it's gonna take me long, take the machine, take it, run it upstairs, total, and then we can add those totals to that.
So. What I would suggest, we do a quick hand ballot.
Okay.
Right. Okay. So, this one's everybody except precinct. So, the state national offices, if you'll write these, they got a piece of paper. Uh, for US Senator Joan Farr. For Governor and Lieutenant Governor Arlen Briggs and Lance Burling. For Secretary of State Mike Brown. All right, so US Senator Joan Farr. Governor and Lieutenant Governor Arlen Briggs and Lance Burling. Secretary of State Mike Brown. Attorney General Tony Mativa. State Treasurer Karen Tyson. State Representative Seventy-Six District Robert Harmon. And that's it. There'll be other races, but they never mark any of theirs, so I'll tell you as I get through. Yeah, I'm trying to keep them moving because this one's same way as all of the precinct. Oh, I didn't do the question and no on the constitutional question. The next, uh, Jeremy Moran, US Senator. Jacob Turner, US States Representative District Two. Derek Schmidt, Katie Sawyer for Governor and Lieutenant Governor. Scott Schwab for Secretary of State. Chris Kobach for Attorney General. Karen Tyson for State Treasurer. Vicky Schmidt for Commissioner of Insurance. Eric Smith for Representative of the State of District Seventy-Six. Christine Foster as County Treasurer. They filled out, but they're not allowed to vote. And this one's a yes on the constitutional. This one's all except township. Uh, yes, on the question. Jeremy Moran. Jacob Turner. Derek Schmidt. Scott Schwab. Chris Kobach. Karen Tyson. Vicky Schmidt. Robert Harmon. Christine Foster. All except precinct and township. Okay. Jeremy Moran. Jake La Turner. Derek Schmidt. Chris Kobach. Robert Harmon. Yes, on the question. Uh, no on the question. Mark Holland, US Senator, oh, this is Democratic primary this one. Laura Kelly. Nothing else. Precinct. Paul Buskirk. Laura Kelly. Gianna, Gianna Repass, I guess, sir. Chris Mann. J E A N N A.
The last one.
R E P A S S. Chris Mann. Lynn Rogers. Just K I E L. C O R K R A M. And State Representative Seventy-Six District. All but precinct. Jeremy Moran. Commissioner race. So, Jeremy Moran, Dick La Turner, Derek Schmidt. Mike Brown. Tony Mativa. Vicky Schmidt. Robert Harmon. Christine Foster. That's enough. All but. Yes, on my vote. Uh, Jeremy Moran. Arlen Briggs, Lance Burling. That's the governor's race. Mike Brown. Kelly Warren. Vicky Schmidt. Eric Smith. They can't vote their Fred Diver. Fred Diver. Oh, I was wrong. No, she, no, yeah, they can't do it, Commissioner, I see they're take Fred's out. Commissioner and precinct, so, but divers out of that one, so it'd be Moran, Briggs. Mike Brown, Kelly Warren, Vicky Schmidt, Eric Smith. And the answer on the question was yes. Let's say, commission. This is a no vote on the vote. I don't know why she has that, because there's no permission on this, that's what gets me confused. Uh, Jerry Mario. Jake La Turner. Derek Schmidt. Scott Schwab. Kelly Warren. Karen Tyson. Vicky Schmidt. Ken Corbett. Christine Foster. Can't count precinct, can't count township, I guess, those are. Oh, committee, that's what the COMM, we better go back and heard that one.
I think this one might be that you do, because of.
This one they don't count, but I'm thinking.
Here it says all but, and here it just says.
I think this one is committee person, not precinct, or Commissioner, I think this is.
That with the symbol.
We're gonna have to check this, because I don't.
Because I don't know.
That will check that.
I don't know what she means.
Can we go around the back down here? Well, that, no, it's gotta be all, they can't be, because you wouldn't be, all these other people would not be, not in the bill, because they're national offices.
Well, let's just double check, but I, because on this other one, she said all but, and then she included them.
I understand that, but, right.
It might be the same note, but.
Right, I'm gonna guess that you're not gonna say that you can't vote for the national elections. This is always that we did the national part, we're wondering about the township, and ladies. I got the other one pulled up there. They go ask her. Yeah, just passed that, whatever, one, the other. So if the note on the front says precinct. COMM Township, does that mean we don't count them?
Do not count those.
Okay. So, it is Commissioner or is it committee, because you got their committee and precinct. So here's one that says Commissioner, it says. But committee precinct township, but I'm, I'm thinking this might be official, but I don't know if you're gonna tell me about that. That's how we wrote it, that's how we wrote it. The last one is a no. Joan Farr. Derek Schmidt. Mike Brown. Chris Kobach. Stephen Johnson. There's a new one, no, there's a new one. Vicky Schmidt. Eric Smith. Christine Foster.
Didn't you have?
The ones that you couldn't read on.
The sheet would not read, and those are the full, well, except for one.
Okay. Jake La Turner. Derek Schmidt. Mike Brown. Chris Kobach. Vicky Schmidt. Ken Corbett. Christine Foster. Gary Ray, S W R A Y. Curtis Stahill, I hope I'm pronouncing these names right. And Kimberly Stahill. Next one is Jeremy Moran. Jake La Turner. Derek Schmidt. Scott Schwab. Chris Kobach. Karen Tyson. Vicky Schmidt. Ken Corbett. Christine Foster. Jim Shively. Paul D. Costrelli. Heather Coote. And that is a yes on the amendment. And the first one was a yes on the amendment also. Okay, last one. Joan Farr. Jake La Turner. Mike Brown, so I just skipped the governors over double mark.
Brown is a yes.
Yeah, yeah, he's a mark, Kelly Warren. Karen Tyson. Vicky Schmidt. Ken Corbett. Fred Diver. Christine Foster. Christina M. Corbett.
That's a different Corbett. Yes, she's in.
This is a township court. The committee one for South Boring, it's Christian McGrew. And committee woman is Amanda Cole. And that is a no on the questionnaire.
If this is a discrepancy, I might not have written something down on it, so I'll see what I have.
You know what, I didn't write it. I've read the numbers, but I didn't write it down, I'm not cheap. You got them over there. So let's just go down, let's start with, uh. The national offices, we've got Moran and Farr, how many votes we got, which one? Jake La Turner. Schmidt and Briggs. Secretary of State Scott Schwab. Mike Brown. Attorney General. State Treasurer. Tyson and Johnson.
Yeah, I get six.
Johnson. Commissioner of Insurance would be Vicky Schmidt. State Representative would be Ken Corbett. County offices, we'll go with Commissioners Fred Diver. Del Vater. Dana Weber. Leslie Holman. County Treasurer Christine Foster. Township offices, this is gonna take a long time, because we got very long down here. Uh, I'll do the one I got here first, for Buringame Township Clerk Christina Corbett. Uh, committee person Kristen McGraw. And Amanda Cole. Township and Ridgeway Jim Shively. Paul D. Costrelli. Heather Coote. Gary Ray.
Well, we missed Harmon and Smith.
Yeah, I haven't got any of those yet. The questionnaires on those both were two, two yeses, one no. On those three, I just read. First three were just, two yeses, one no on the constitutional amendment. But I'm good.
I've got two.
All right, well, I'm getting the counts, so that's fine. We've counted them, but now we're just making sure the number, I gotta go back through these because of the townships, I don't have them over it now. So Casey Mizala. Uh, he said, oh, no, it was not counted as precinct, no, never mind. That was not counted, that was not counted, I think we're good on that, then. For the count. So the other ones are the Democratic ones, which are. Gianna Repass. I'm going down the list that's on there, is there Patrick Schmidt having those? Chris Mann. Len Rogers. Skip them for water. Eric Smith. And Bob. Yes, is one no so far. Yes, yes. Yes. Seven, six. Slash be all. You want me to read these to you, or?
Um, I think I got them all. The only thing I don't.
So we got the county office.
So I have the county office machines, and then I'm ready to sign off.
So we can add them. Three fifty-four is gonna go to three fifty-five for Buskirk or whatever.
Right. So I just made it count. So this would be three fifty-five. And then this one would be a thousand and two. So it'd be forty.
So do we just read the numbers?
Want to do that, you can do that.
I just haven't. So none of the provisional balance were put into this original.
No, that, no, this is the total now that everything's been put into the machine, except for what you hand counted.
All right. So for United States Senator. This will be on the Democrat side. Mike Ondra, forty votes. Paul Buskirk, three fifty-five. Robert Klingenberg, eighty-four. Michael Sotard. I butchered her names once, sorry. Uh, for United States Attorney, Patrick Schmidt, eight sixty-eight. Governor, Senate Governor, one thousand two for Laura Kelly, one oh-six for Richard Karnowski. Secretary of State, Kianna Repass, nine hundred votes. Attorney General Chris Mann, nine thirty-two. State Treasurer Lynn Rogers, nine twenty-seven. Commissioner of Insurance, Kyle Corbin. District fifty-four Lyndon Johnson, four forty-five. State Rep. District Seventy-six, four sixty-four for Chuck Torres. Uh, there was a write-in for Commissioner under District One of thirty votes for, on the Democrats' side, I don't know who they are. County Treasurer, about eighty. Township was three. How do you do the write-ins? You never look at those.
One by one, so these will have to be added into the election.
Okay. So the write-in numbers are there. Read all the write-in numbers.
Well, my idea doesn't really.
Yeah, what I mean, maybe the only races, most of the insurance.
Yes. Well, there's a township.
Results that are on the page.
Okay.
Go ahead and add it, and then develop the final abstract.
I probably will. We've had done until our finish with our meeting, because that takes a lot of time.
Right. So I'm just saying, do a preliminary, announce the two votes.
Okay, so County Commissioner, District One. I'll just go in order around the sheet. Fred Diver, three hundred and twenty-seven votes. Leslie Holman, three hundred and thirty-six votes. Del Vauder, one hundred and five votes. And Dana Weber, three hundred and twenty votes. And then for Ridgeway Township was the other one, no votes.
So you want to add that one.
For Township. Township Daniel Gaston, two hundred and fourteen. Jim Shively, two hundred and twenty-four. Now, what was your suggestion? Certified by state. The two races.
All races. Preliminary certified races and drug cannabis.
I'll make a motion to certify the preliminary results of the election, subject to Ron, but making a third county clerk get in us the final ballot sheet. That will certify. Thank you for calling in. Lawler, whatever you're gonna use.
No.
Okay. Oh, it's been a long day.
Lunchtime.
Hi, Ryan. Hi, are you here?
Hi, Josh. Thank you, Christine.
There's people that were here for PBC. I don't know if Danny can get back to Kansas City or wherever, when possible.
Uh, yeah, you're probably here to help with that too. So why don't we recess the commission meeting? Or? Government Commission, and then we'll come back to the commission meeting. Yeah, we're gonna recess it, because we're closed the journal. Correct. So we'll call to order a public building council. I'll make the motion. We call to order a public building council. All those, if ever say aye. Aye. All post same time. Okay, come on up, guys.
Had a busy morning.
Yeah. I think we got questions on the watch. Nobody, you're an email, nobody really. Of course, I'm not gonna sign off on sending stuff out. We kinda need you guys. If you want checks issued, probably be here.
Yeah, and then the other question was, do we or do we not need a separate banking? Again, in, if it's okay with everybody else, I'll go ahead and start. It is an appropriate question. One of the pieces of advice that I always give to city counties and schools that I work with on bond issues is that it's gonna be helpful down the road if you can keep good records of the money you received, which would be the bond proceeds, and the investment earnings that you're receiving on that, and then how those dollars are spent. You know, every once in a while, you'll have a random IRS audit, and you have to show, here's the money we got, here's how it was spent. And so just being able to have that separated from other county projects, where you can look at a statement or records and see, you know, the money that you have in the interest earnings.
So we get these.
Yep.
So this, is this part of what you're talking about? Because this is some of the interests.
Yeah, it is, exactly. And so when we set up this issue, we we wanted to get the bond proceeds invested and invested in treasury securities. And as we've done on a lot of other PBC projects, we have security banks serving as what's called an investment dispersment agent. And so they're holding the money in a project fund there, and the statement that you just held up came from a security bank. And so that's where you see the money, the bond proceeds, the investment earnings that are coming in. And then I believe, did we set up a security bank where they would would actually write the checks? Or did we set it up to where they would send wire transfer money to the county? And then send it out? I know we had some discussions.
I thought we said that they wrote the check.
The way we understood it is, we thought they were taking care of the majority of this.
Yeah.
That we could set up a wire transfer for the payment, to get your.
Yeah, so let's separate the discussion into two classes. The payment of cost related to project fund, and then when you make your annual. So appreciate the clarification on security bank making the payments. That was my understanding as well. I think we started out with a discussion about maybe having the money come to the county, which gets a little complicated. So if they're holding the money in the project fund, then you get a draw for construction expenses, then you would have to have that wire transfer to the county, and then you would write a check, and then now go to the construction company, for example. Challenge there is, if you have that money coming back and it just goes in the general checking account, then it's not that clear separation. Then have that extra step. If there's an invoice, you send it to a security bank, then they pay that invoice.
That's one part. So that's paying the invoices that were received.
Sure. And so for that, that part of the process, security bank is not involved. Security bank is just holding the project construction fund, and I believe this, the state treasurer is serving as paying agent for the bond issue. I can't remember. Do we, do you remember? The paying agent for the bond issue is the entity that where you send the money, you'll get a semi-annual invoice, your debt service is due. So when you think about, and that, the county is legal documents, making a lease payment to the PBC. The PBC is then paying the paying agent, and the paying agent passing them on to the bond investors. Now, the reality is legal documents allow for the county to make the lease payment directly to the paying agent, so you don't have to, you know, transfer it on your books you want to, but there's no physical transfer of dollars from the county to the PBC checking account, and then a PBC checking account to the state treasurer or the paying agent.
That was a question you had last week.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought we had to show the county paying the PBC.
You do wanna show that, but it doesn't mean you have to go out and create a separate checking account, like you have it come from the county general checking account, to then a PBC checking account, then to the paying agent checking account, and then on to bond investors. So you can have the county make the lease payment directly to the paying agent on behalf of the PBC. Yeah, the legal documents allow for that. And that is the way most of the PBC bonds are done, because it saves you from having one new checking bank, another bank account that you're really not using. I mean, it would go in and immediately go out, and that only happens twice a year.
And the money that's gonna come into those accounts is gonna be off of special sales tax.
For the first four years, correct. Yeah. And so I think, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask you that answer to your questions, Christine, because you had several of them last week. And I just wanna make sure that.
It answers one, so no separate bank account.
This is for the payments from the sales tax.
Right. So we'll pay.
The paying agent, you know, pay, yeah, paying agent. And I'll get you the information about where you'll send it.
On behalf of the PBC.
Correct.
Which that is only the payments for us.
Only the bond.
Everything else is directly from the bank that we've.
Yeah.
So the second part was needing a treasurer on the PBC who will keep records of what our bond proceeds are, what the bills are that they authorize to pay when the county is submitting that lease payment. Because those will not be recorded on the county bills. Back to me, the question is, who the treasurer was going to be on the PBC and maintain those, but then Jay thought that the entity was going to basically keep the books, the one in Kansas City.
That's how I've seen it. So is that not correct?
No, it is correct, but you wouldn't have somebody on the county in kind of mirroring those, you know.
For checks.
For checks and balances, so.
So our treasurer would be the one that would be our checks and balances.
Exactly. And that's the way it is. The PBC statute states that you'll pick a board of directors between three and nine people, and then you'll designate a secretary, and then it gives the power to the board to appoint other administrative officers. I had a chance to go through all of this with Kevin Cowan and go more about. And I've worked on a lot of PBC issues. So typically what is done is you don't go out and hire a new treasurer, kind of separate from the county treasurer. There's more work in the early couple of years while you have some construction going on. Here, we've got some sales tax coming in. But really, when you think about it, after that four-year point where the sales tax expires, then you really, the transactions, it's two per year, you make two bond payments, and that's only all the record keeping. Now, the record keeping that you would wanna have, kind of, I'm assuming you'd create a fund or set of accounts, PBC, law enforcement project fund, and you would show receiving in the bond proceeds, and then as you, like, if you have a five hundred thousand dollar construction expense, then you'll show that on your books, but that's gonna match up exactly with what you're getting from security.
You say show on your books, you're talking about PBC.
PBC, but PBC, correct.
So it would be like a separate, like you.
So it'd be like, have quick books for the PBC, you have their separate, not the county.
Exactly.
So is it customary for the county treasurer to be appointed as the treasurer of the PBC?
It is, yeah. I can't think of a situation where it wasn't.
And so you're, you would be comfortable if you did that that program or something completely not in the county system?
Yeah. Men, I wouldn't have crap, but that checks them, but I just, because we had the conversation with the auditor as well, as far as colleagues.
That's actually gonna be my next question, was that if you've had this conversation with the auditors, because the auditors will have a separate audit for the PBC, and or I assume that's probably the conversation that you had with them. And then they're gonna look at your records, and then they're gonna check your records with the security bank statements, and. Exactly, yeah. Sort of like a reconciliation.
Let's head it. We talked to Scott. We were sure if we were doing, the county was doing lease payments to the PBC, and now that was a counter.
Say the payment is two hundred thousand, receiving in a lease payment.
So when it comes to a commission meeting that we are, we are receiving in the PBC, but he just said the county will pay on the PBC.
That takes that lease payment.
We pay those twice a year, but the other, the other mine's already sent at the bank, and that'll be the PBC going, making Kansas City to send out to them. So that will happen through the PBC account.
As a, as a meeting of commissioners.
So then, once we approve these, are you submitting them? Or drawn submitting them, or what's the process on that?
I think either one of us is the way that we understood it. Could do that on behalf of the.
And then these will just go in the PBC file along with, like, all the minutes and stuff, or where's?
Yeah, you're saying on the treasurer, then, yeah.
All I, I get that part. Once we approve them, and I have all this paper that comes to me as a secretary, I need to know where's the paper going, and where's it staying and be kept.
All right, let's fix one thing first. We'll just make the motion. See, treasure. All those, if ever say aye. Okay, that's.
So then, yes, you bring it to me, and you email that.
Thank you.
Treasurer's office, with a separate set of books for the PBC. These payments come up, and then as far as when the bills are approved, then if I'm not sure if I'm gonna do it, it's our great. If it's not on behalf of the PBC, sort of be understood.
Okay, so what bills do we currently have that need to be reviewed?
This is the only one I know of right now.
I think we have a, we have a couple of, yeah.
That you have? Do you need to bring those down? Okay.
I don't care. Okay, I'm gonna do the next one. No, no, sure.
Well, I really, I really don't want them.
Let's get this one back.
Yeah.
I don't worry about them, guys. Just payment. You didn't say it, did you? Would you, you're okay.
We're gonna do this one.
So what is this?
There's a new. There's a new. It's from the office Kansas City Treasurer Bond Registration. And it says new startup fee book entry registration fee for $6,330.
And that's the paying agent role that I referenced. That's their.
That's the motion that we need to pay, have security bank pay that out. Okay.
The security bank is the correct technical name.
Security Bank of Kansas City is there officially.
I'll make a motion. We have security bank of Kansas City pay the payment to the office of the Kansas State Treasurer. An amount of 6330.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All post same side, motion.
And I would also add, and on this as well, but you'll probably start receiving more invoices if you get, you know, construction really starts to progress. A lot of times those will be put in a batch with the, I think there's a requisition form that you attach on top of any invoice you want security bank to pay. And so you might just batch all of those invoices into one requisition and you just submit that off to.
So should we just do like the PBC do the payment of bills twice?
I think so. It, it works well for the county then. I think that process.
Cause these are the investment proceeds information. And so maybe like once a month, we can get a report that just shows. I mean, that's going to show these too, but just what, what our side shows, show balances and interest accrued or anything.
Sure. For you, we're hiding in the corner. Did you, did you just sub for us the building question? Are you guys done?
Come out and, and go through this and, you know, just getting it set up before you.
Quite good song, my secretary, that's on the list.
Just want to make sure we're doing it correctly.
We'll probably need you to hold our hand for maybe. So we are back from recess. We're in our regularly scheduled board meeting or commission meeting. And we have, maybe you're going in front of Ryan's already left hand. So yeah.
I stopped two items with the change in personnel signers that the commissioners sign an updated letter. To Linden State Bank to get access to our bank accounts online to be able to monitor payments and debits. They asked for a specific letter that allows us to have a group on my banking.
So the first one is the, the banking authority is Ron Beats, you and Christine Fluntz is the authorized signature examiner, Melinda Reese and Leonard Roach. So we're just changing the, the routing. Okay. So that'll be the motion I'm making that we approved that. All those in favor say aye. All post same side. The second one is the online banking authority. We, we haven't done that before.
I haven't for Landmark and Citizen, they gave it to me, but Linden State Bank.
So I would make a motion, we've put the online banking authority for Saint Paul's County Treasurer, Christine Fluntz Deputy Treasurer. Do you need access to that too, Ron? Have access to online banking and other financial activities on behalf of the state county of Kansas.
For Linden State Bank.
For Linden State Bank.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All post same side. Right. I got the quotes.
Oh, is this for replacement or repairs?
Repairs. And this is to give.
And this is all going to turn in for.
Through K Camp.
Yeah.
Has it been approved or authorized? Have they seen these?
Those, I sent those out this morning. Just for your truck to get it fixed. One of them is, okay. This is the other truck.
What am I looking at? This is just all the individual?
That would be the individual for the big truck.
So all the different things that have to be fixed on it.
So these have been sent to the insurance company?
Yes.
And who did you have to fix it? Um, they have not made a decision yet. I looked at my email a little bit ago.
I saw it.
So that's where we're at right now.
Do you know why there's a, why there's that much of a difference, sir?
Um, the one has the axle being replaced. I don't believe that one had that on there, which is probably about a $2,500 difference, but there's a bigger difference there on that. But then you're picking up more labor by adding that axle.
So I guess it's, it's kind of insurance company is going to tell you which way you got to go and if they feel something, they're going to be adding to it.
So, yeah, and I already talked to her about that on mine because there was a difference between um, the Osage Body Shop and the Birmingham one. And I said, you know, it's like the Birmingham one has the grill replaced in there. So. But yeah, that's the.
I did.
The one, okay. Yeah, I got it. That gets close to the email.
I mean, insurance company is going to tell you to get a good day to fix it. So that will be.
Yeah, I, I went to, um, Osage, so I have an appointment set up for this week, drop the truck off. Um, I just wanted to kind of.
But I guess what I'm saying is the insurance company, K Camp is going to tell you.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that's where we go from there. Um, I had talked to you about the where we're at with the best control for the back route.
They contacted us back.
He, he looked over everything. He hasn't contacted us back, but we're going to go ahead and I put my name in for the word. He said it sounded like everything was good. What he was going over was the rock that I had in the different areas. So we went ahead and started getting some of the rock out there on that road. So what we can do is we can show them.
So hopefully they get that down in the next couple of weeks.
I'm hoping, um, that's why once I talked to Steve and everything was kind of started in motion that morning, I went ahead and called Scottwood Industries and got our name on the list. So we can get that taken care of as soon as possible. I'll be at the resolution for the. Renner called me last week and I did not have a copy of that.
So was the options of maybe putting up those stop signs, did that get decided that needed to be done or not?
Um, I looked at it and we were actually protected. I think extra signs up there. Let's say certain term and stuff if they get hit or something, it might create more confusion than leaving it just the way it is. Cause I drove the route both ways, seemed like if I was coming up there. Basically, the problem we're going to have is if they're creeping too far over when they're coming around those curves. To create a hazard, but I mean, that's just, it's as much as we'd like to. And I think if we, we even talked about even shutting off those curves where they had to come up to and I mean, stop and turn. There's everywhere to keep all the trucks off there. Got local trucks that you can't keep off there. So the truck sign, I think is probably a suggestion there.
So is it working to keep most people off the 245? I went and drove 245 the other day.
Yeah.
But I haven't driven the 250.
I, I think it cut down on some of the big truck traffic on 245.
The truck traffic, that one slowed down, but the.
But, but so traffic itself still.
But here's what's going to happen. We got next one, harvest.
Yeah.
So all those trucks down everywhere, you can't keep them off there.
Yeah.
Nor do we want to. I mean, that's, that's what the roads are for.
Yeah, I just thought we were trying to get the average.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think that's been too many right, because we have the FedEx 18, we were running down that road.
And I'm talking to K dot, K dot said put a sign up, says no trucks. That's what the lady told me, put a sign up, there says no trucks, keep them off there, but yeah, how do you do that? And we talked about that, you know, with your local trucks. So. Okay, I mean, you got three businesses out there have trucks that have, they can get it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understood it to be that there are local individuals that they are going to have to use that. But then the other traffic that isn't going to do the full detour, that's where the 250 there came in.
Yeah.
But then there's the local, there are people are going to have to use 245 for certain. That's kind of what.
Now, the township road they shut down, so there should be on it all, but that doesn't solve a model by saying they got to sign that this weekend on the one.
Yes, uh, they're putting pieces back together at this point. Somebody ran through it. So, um, uh, another thing that I wanted to ask is, um, make the position at the transfer station. Foreman position back to the way that it used to be.
I would run it out.
Right, right now, I just, I just kind of put him in that position out there and just. So I haven't made it official yet. So I want to make that official.
So the blue sheet or anything or?
I do not have a.
Was that just changing money? Have you changed his pay or are you changing his pay or?
I would like to, um, for the added stuff that he's having. So.
Is there a description for that position?
There was before, but I think it changed.
Yeah. It used to be.
You might see if whatever Jeff had changed it to, if that got sent to HR and you might see if she has that.
Okay.
Just if, because I don't know if that happened.
The one you'd convert to would be wrong.
And she'll have.
Yeah.
But he's been there twice. Sometimes that would be a little bit different.
And, and we discussed.
But I think they started off, well, my memory, but I was thinking there was a dollar difference since we're now.
Yeah, and what I figured that'd be once he gets served or whatever.
You might even have to go, Melinda, go on, go back, get some of the old ones. Yeah, you can go back to, how long will you go back on them? So you can go back for at least five years or five, or four years, three years, whatever.
All right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Have a good day. I forgot about you. I see you over in high still. I'm saving you for last.
Okay, what I talked to K dot is that they are going to reimburse the total amount of what it costs to repair the vehicles right now. Because we haven't gotten the, the new ones.
So that's the, which ones? The big van?
The, well, we got the big one that's showing you with the transmission. That's already been done and proved.
And they're going to pay it back at a hundred percent?
And they're going to pay it back at a hundred percent. And she told me, they told me to go ahead and submit the other vehicles that we have that need work. Thanks. So the one that we have, we still have, but we had got rid of. But if that is, and then we have another one from Hannah's Auto. And this is with an engine that she gets and that's with 77,000 mile bar. Now with, with Terry's, the, uh, the deal is with that is that that's got labor and parts and um, it's 77,000. The other one is like 80,000, I think, or something like that. And then what K, uh, whatever that one is, I have to pick it. They told me is there is 12 and 12 warranty, but they only go for up to $50 an hour for parts. So it's a little bit different.
Which vehicles is?
9148. Yeah.
Is that a van or is it?
It's a van.
It's a van.
It's an engine. Yeah. Um, and so this one is just for the repair, but it wouldn't be at, I mean, it would be the $50. Does that make sense?
What, what is K dot? Are they also reimbursing for the half?
Severton. Yeah, right now they're doing all of it. They're adding.
So this is if he does the motor that they're going to send or we go with the lower mileage motor.
Right. Right.
Well, if his warranty, it looks like is a one year warranty. Parts and labor. And it's a 77,000 mile versus an 80 some thousand mile.
Plus it's.
And it's cheaper.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, cause this one's a warranty of parts like $50 or so.
So.
Yeah, this one together is that number right there. If he did the whole thing with the lower mileage motor. This is the one if he does, just put it in that.
Right, but then it doesn't have the same warranty.
My question was, when you go to put these in to be reimbursed a hundred percent, how will you submit that so that they're going to know that it's a hundred percent reimbursement and not a 70, 30 or 80, 20?
Because they, they told me, they just told me. No.
Could you just get something in writing in the?
I have a contract that they sent me. I do have that, but it didn't have an amount on it.
Okay, but you have a contract that says they'll reimburse these repairs a hundred percent.
I do.
Because the other ones, the other vehicles aren't available.
Right. Well, it doesn't say because they're not available, but they have a special account that they're.
I just didn't know when you go to, you're going to submit that, that the person processing it.
Right, right. Because it goes to Mandy, but it also, they also asked for a direct deposit. And I haven't heard back from the lady on that and I don't know how that would work. The contract asks if you have a direct deposit. I, I don't think we do, but yeah, we did. So I don't know how that works.
Probably how they send us money.
Well, I know, but I don't think they've done that before, have they? And, and I asked them if, if we could get it differently just because of how we, we figured out so that it goes back in the general fund. But that way we know that it came a hundred percent. So, and then I'm not done. So we have two vans right now that need alignment and new tires.
So let's stop here for a second. Let's do these more than a time. So let's, otherwise we have stuff scattered everywhere.
Okay.
So the first question is the motor on the van. So looking at these.
It's 9148, I believe. I'll have to verify that, but I've got so many numbers.
That's, that's the number of the van.
I think it is. Yeah, I'll verify that and.
Yeah, I don't see a number on here.
And what are the two?
But this makes, this is nuts to me. I mean, why you would ever pay for $700, you're going to get a warranty for a year with parts and labor versus they're going to get a percentage. Yeah, I mean, this is a no brainer. This is what you do.
There, there are three of these and this is an engine.
This is just to put the motor in. This is a engine. This is the other guy that put one in.
So what's this?
That's a total. And this is totally different motor, lower mileage motor and everything. That's a higher mileage motor. And this is if he put that motor in, this is if he put that motor in. This one stand alone. This one stand alone. These are for people to put a motor in. This is a motor if you buy that used motor. This, if you buy a different used motor with lower mileage and he puts it in.
This is just labor.
Correct. Correct.
This is the item, yes, and we only have one quote on the actual item.
Do what?
Uh, there's two, yes, there's another one out here with the motor. This is excellent, okay. Oh, would you do it? Seven oh eight ten, which is for the complete motor install and warranty on the. Fourteen dot credit care man, this will be paid back a hundred percent.
Okay, and then this one is for, uh, we actually have two now that needs, hey, what can I say? That needs alignments and new tires, so.
Are you gonna hammer those or?
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to explain it. Because I don't do terminology either, so I'm not a car dealer either.
Do both vehicles need both?
Both, we have two vehicles right now that both need alignments and new tires.
Okay, and is that something that a mechanic has told you, or just the drivers are recording some?
No, I should, we've had them to the mechanic, and they need new tires.
There's my business, we're all over. All these guys have their own in-house.
So tires and alignment and all three.
Right, right.
So they all have their own machines to do the alignments.
That's the way I understand, I have one that's just tired, but they can't, they don't do the alignment.
So is this times two then?
Yeah, times two vehicles, yes.
So this is perfect.
Right, that's perfect.
And that's also approved by K dot.
I would make sure they knew that we had one, but I will make sure before.
So well, for one, but it's still paid by K dot.
Correct, that's the way, the one is.
This is just normal, this will be like the seventy thirty.
No.
No, it's.
She said that they're doing, they're, they have a different account right now, so it's, it's because they know that vehicles are needing a lot of extra, our vehicles have over two hundred, some of them have over two hundred fifty thousand miles on. And they're still.
This is a little bit again. Same tire as I'm assuming. Yeah. That's a little different car, but they're real comparable. So I'll make the motion, we approve. And it's auto, we're installing warranty tires, I don't know which van that says, uh, that's eighteen dot grand care man.
I can't, yeah.
And then, uh, seven oh four oh seven, um, for one vehicle, and then if you need to second one, you'll make it right back, and this also will be paid for refunded by K dot one hundred percent.
So I'll make sure that I get something right.
All those in favor, say hi. Hi. So if you need to second one, there's a good amount of time.
Okay, let's go what?
Just another second, so if you need a second.
Um. And I don't have the, the floor for the flooring yet. Um, for the flooring at the senior center, I have, I'm waiting for one more.
Floor.
Oh, maybe you didn't know, I thought you guys did, Fred came in, so I'm, okay, what to do is they put the new door in, the door won't come open with the flooring in there that's on, in there right now. No, it's, it is at an angle, but I think that was on purpose, but, um.
They installed the wrong way, should the door open out?
We have one that opens out, but it won't unlock now, and then the one that opens in, uh, it catches on the floor, and I have a bunch that can't get it open. So.
Is that how it's always been?
No.
Did both doors open in before?
No, they, they never both opened in, one opens in and one opens out, but the one that opens out, we don't normally keep unlocked, but we, we could.
Maybe you should just switch it, and the one that opens out, we use, and the one that.
I can't keep it unlocked, I can't unlock it, I have called him and asked him if they could fix that, they didn't, he did send somebody over, but.
Is this the door that got hit by the car?
This is the door that got.
And they installed a new door?
Yes.
And it doesn't lock and it doesn't work?
It does unlock.
Did it, so both doors or one door?
Both, the whole, the whole situation, the whole frame and door was.
All of them, I've got nothing else to fix along.
Exactly, I've called them once, and I'll call them again, but the flooring is gonna have to have something done so that the door will open. It's, it's pretty thick tile that's on there, plus it's slick.
Did they install a door with a different threshold or something?
No, well, it's, it's because of, I guess, the angle and stuff, I don't know.
But the other door open?
The one that opens out, the other one that, that was damaged, yes.
The one that opened in used to work.
We'll find out, right when it gets back, what, what's going on?
Do what?
We'll ask right when it gets back, but I don't, yeah, I mean, we're.
Am I missing something here? I feel like.
If the door was working before, then there's gotta be something on the floor, I agree, I don't know why we're looking at the floor, you know.
We should not have to change the floor.
Something would have changed, something has to, yeah, I don't know why, um.
So we need to have the door people come back and look at it and tell us what's changed a while.
They, they said that it's because of the strip, but I don't understand.
But if it opened before.
With the strip, exactly, and I don't know, maybe the strip was wore off before, I don't know. Uh, but yeah, it's, and it is very hard sometimes for me to open, so. And like I said, I've called them about the one door being unlocked, and somebody came out, but we still can't unlock, so.
Can I go first?
Has Caitlin come?
No, she is not.
Do you know these guys, his black shirts? And they wanted to see us. We forgot a minute? Sure.
How's it going today?
I am sore, but at least I finally got news, I go to the.
Yeah, hopefully I get a fix for you. Uh, I want to talk about building real quick, did you guys open that up for bid?
We did.
My, my, I have the paper, I did not get it presented last week, I don't know what I was supposed to.
Cause we're kind of in a time crunch with.
Uh, we need to put that up for a request for this.
I assume he asked for the paper.
Okay.
I know I've said.
So I published this whole thing in the newspaper. No, that's a question, or should I?
I would just.
I would talk to her wanting and have them contact the county to get that, cause I've got support.
I assume there's an actual proposal. Well, I assume there's actually like a, this is open for bid, something like that.
Well, I don't know how, there is a process, request for proposal, that's like a, a sheet that has all the specifications and where to return things to and stuff like that. I don't, I don't know who writes those, that's a process.
We have it right there, so I would say you put it in the paper and have contact the county.
So I'm just gonna.
To get a copy of that.
The county is taking bids for the.
And can we cut it off in like two weeks so we can get it quickly?
I, I'm asking here, cause I don't understand, the county is asking for bids for the building of.
Two sites.
Two sided building.
So we don't know how many we need, that might make a big difference.
We'll, we'll say three right now.
Okay.
We may be able to cut one of those off.
Can you write something up for Rhonda that's specific, cause she's asking how to describe what you're asking for, so could you write something?
Yeah.
That describes what you're asking, and she can accompany it with.
Sure.
That sheet.
Yeah, that, I think that says ten by twelve too, doesn't it, and we're doing like anybody?
Ten by eight, eight, no, eleven feet, eight inches wide by ten feet, six inches high.
We'll send you.
Yeah, because the time.
They'll send you. If they expect, they can contact the sheriffs.
Right, it can be very generic, and they can contact us, and I can give them a couple of those.
I would have them contact the sheriffs, tell them what they're gonna do.
Okay.
That'd be perfect.
Do you have, um, vendors or companies that you would like them to submit a bid, like?
We have several bids already done, we just, yeah, we, we wanted to offer to local people for building.
I would say that it'll go out in the paper today, it's, it's about a paper on the tenth or eleventh, we could make it happen by the twenty ninth, if there's enough time to have it taken in.
Is that something you can also share, like on your Facebook page?
Yeah.
Not everyone reads the paper.
Sure, yeah, I think you're gonna put it on ours, the county website.
So we'll just put by ten AM, eight twenty nine.
Cause you're wanting to see if there's locals in there or something.
Yeah, we, we're hoping someone to come in and.
And at the same time, you guys need to have your prefab people put theirs out for that same day.
Yeah.
We will have a bunch of different, ones from different companies.
The one I'm saying is, we're putting it out there now, asking for a request for proposals, so they, it's, they're stuck to, so we're asking for that, that.
And most of these are sixty day bids, so we should be good on most of them.
They'll be open on August twenty ninth at ten AM.
Okay, and don't forget, August twenty ninth at nine AM is when we have the revenue control rate carrying. And that's it, that's the only thing that I've heard on that piece of that.
It was those notices going out, by the way.
Uh, they're, they're stepping, they have to be out by Wednesday, they'll be out by Wednesday.
Our new courthouse security.
So different, great than what we're used to.
Is this what?
It's a different rate?
No, that's the starting rate for deputy.
So.
Yes, we a deputy sheriff, that would be.
Oh, this could be courthouse security.
Yeah.
And I got medical this morning.
Yes, yes, probably so.
Like, I don't know, we've got to.
It's a nice guy.
I was trying to get out of this quicker than I could, I was sick to shirt, so I might as well approve the, our, and Terry Hollins, Hollins?
Hollingsworth?
Hollingsworth, uh, as a full-time deputy to work courthouse security, twenty five per hour, effective, uh, eight eight, two thousand twenty two.
Second.
All those in favor, say hi, I'll put the same sign, I'm motion jerks.
Just saying, um, this is, the, one of these is to replace the one we just lost, and then the other two is to put a supervisor on, so we have a supervisor every shift, so we actually have someone to answer.
This is someone who's already here.
These are all three, these are people that are here, they're replacing, uh, the one that we had leave.
Okay, cause this.
One of the supervisors, we had leave.
This is the.
So these are the dispatch supervisors, this finishes dispatch out, deputy is out, and now the only thing we have left is a jail, for the hierarchy that I campaign though. We'll probably wait for a little while in jail.
So you got three corporals in, uh, dispatch?
Yes.
So all of these are currently working here now?
Yes, they all been working here for a significant amount of time.
So I might, so I'm gonna read them all, well, no, I can't read them all, it's cause there's different rates on each of them.
Should be close to the same on most of them. Should be.
My one's eighteen eighty one, one's nineteen oh six, one's nineteen thirty one, so. I'll make the motion, we approve the payroll change for Jacob Burrell, uh, effective nine one, two thousand twenty two, seventeen oh six to eighteen eighty one hour. And that's been promoted to a corporal position in dispatch department, also August fourth to, uh, September first, Mariah Schultz, uh, pronounced.
Yes.
From seventeen thirty one to nineteen oh six, now also been promoted to corporal in dispatch, and Tammy Heslop from seventeen fifty six to nineteen thirty one hour, also been promoted to corporal dispatch. So are there three shifts, is that what it is?
There's four shifts, total, we have one supervisor, we had two supervisors, one left, Kylie Erickson, remember? And then this replaces her, and then it puts the two on the night shifts, we have supervisor on every shift.
I heard you say so, all those in favor, say hi. I'll put some.
So are you close to full staff?
We are very close, we have one male.
And that's sheriff's department and chief?
Just, yeah, yeah, as long as we have no one leaving for full at this point, uh, we actually have a depth of position open, but we're not gonna build right now, because we're gonna try to do without it. That's for the, uh, two cities that we're doing, we're just gonna leave that not built. If possible. If possible, we're gonna try not.
You're still able to cover it, yes.
That's what we're doing right now, is recovering it, so we're just making sure we're still covering, I think we're gonna be good. Um, the other thing, I talked to each of you about the drone. I, we have three quotes, I brought the best quote, the one was for thirty two thousand, one was for twenty six thousand, and this one I just received. Friday. It's the same, same drone, six thousand dollars cheaper. Uh, it does come with a full warranty, so it's replacement, no questions asked, if something was to happen to it. It's replaced. It's DJI, and it's, I mean, you're paying for the warranty, but it's, I mean, if it sinks in the middle of the lake, cause you're looking for strain in the motorist, or boat. You, you get it replaced, so, I mean, accidents do happen, however, this has got all the safety features.
So is a warranty for certain.
Um, it is a year and then a month or a yearly fee after that, just to make sure you keep it working, which.
Who would be the person doing training?
Um, his name's on the top, there's, I can't pronounce his name very well, some.
No, 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 I mean, who are you gonna have, it says training, eight hours in a field scenario based, plus qualification, so who would be the person that you'd have?
He's gonna train me, Scott, and probably the two sergeants.
And it would be out of the.
Lake patrol.
Like.
Yes.
So lake patrol, and I think I asked you this, but with it coming out of there, there's no restriction that it can only be used around.
Right.
It can be used anywhere.
We'll use it at the lake too, however, we'll use it.
I just didn't know if lake patrol, if there's like restrictions on when you pay out of it, how you can use it.
We have a lot of people that. Either lost, or at the lake, boating at the lakes.
So it's a lake in addition to other.
They get lost sometimes at my house, would you come find me?
It's amazing how many times we go out to mental health issues that they've wandered off, and, you know, we have two right now that are, they don't have the, the, uh, night vision on them, and we've paid for them ourselves.
I was gonna think about all those horse trails and all those, like, and you can't get vehicles, I mean, if somebody got hurt out there. Call, but no one can get there.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm in support of this, but I don't know if with the dollar amount, I need to wait for Fred to come back, just kind of, I mean, I, I can't see him not.
The other thing we can also use, I just want the little all out there so that everyone can hear, we also use it for accident reconstruction, uh, if there's an accident at night, and we have lots of those, and someone gets ejected, I mean, time is of the essence, and this will help.
I don't wanna make this sound bad when I say it this way, but if we both agree this, I say it really doesn't matter what his vote is, but.
I understand.
But I know he's talked to, uh, me several times about this, so I know that.
I brought it up, actually, Fred was on board, I believe, the last time they're running up here too.
So I'll make the motion, and we approve purchase order number thirty seven twenty eight to UAV survey LLC for a DJI matrix, uh. It's this thing called drone, and the batteries operate, spotlight, mod speaker, and the training included at approximately nineteen thousand nine seventy four, to be paid for on the lake patrol phone. All those in there, sorry. I, I'll put some time.
We can do a demonstration too, if you want, whatever comes in, if you guys wanna see, have the things that we do.
I still want to do the demonstration on the other.
We will, yeah, as soon as it comes in, I will definitely get you guys, and probably the news to come out too, cause that'd be good for them, I think, too. I think that's all we got.
Thank you, guys.
I did it.
Oh.
Michael, did you notice?
Um, I am not gonna have that done very quickly, because it, I mean, it takes a while to do that, I have to interview each one of them on a specific screen, and I've done it like maybe twice. So I'm gonna call the software company, get some help.
twice, so I'm gonna call the software company to get some help, it could take me a while. I just, I mean, it's gotta be done correctly and it's about to.
So would he need to sign it today, or is it something he can come back on?
If he could come back and sign it and look at this.
Be on just the next Monday.
Yeah, he would want.
I think I'll be here next Monday, like.
I'll say, we can come in there and.
Michael's retired now, so he has nothing to do.
We we can finish our stuff on the next Monday.
Sorry.
If he can get it done, have him come sign it, then we'll do it next Monday.
Okay, I just let it know when it's set, I can sit at the coffee so you can see it before you can pay out.
Did you get that? So you'll get it before Friday, and then we'll take care of our.
Is impossible to electronically sign. No, I'm just asking, okay, hold on.
I would think say if if DJI didn't even like run up and meet you with it.
I was just, I was just saying electronically, so that's, that's my argument.
I will, I will try to get anything that I've got open yet. Watch that one. I know I'm gonna need T S N S to watch. Okay, so I have the regional, um, hazardous mitigation plan participation form with the emergency director that, um, Greg has brought me. And it needs to be a commissioner put on as a point of contact person. And then someone to sign it, so here it is, he just told me the point of contact should be a commissioner or an official. Sorry, and I think he's listening to us, so we could probably even have him weigh in on that, I needed him to call myself. This is. So, uh, I guess in order for our and and, um, Jeff would probably better explain this, but in order for our elevator to continue to be certified, now we have a phone in it. The elevator's been there for forty five years, you've never had a phone there, now we have it. So I have the first bid from Altech, and that's just to get the line to work, go lead to the elevator, and then Jeff is getting, uh, a bid on how much it will cost actually to get a phone into the elevator. So I guess.
So just how good to do that?
The elevator company that gives us the certification, they said that they come out and it hasn't been done. But they're the ones that we have to pay to put the phone in.
I don't.
Do you see what I say? So instead of saying it's.
What if, well, I'm not saying it's not.
I'm gonna, I would guess would be, yeah, and probably that's what I'm, what is it?
What, you know, those companies that come and they check your, uh, buildings for all your fire.
Right, right.
Regulations. I mean, are they someone who could check to verify that that's accurate? I'm not saying it's not accurate.
I wonder if the.
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal, the state fire marshal, tell us that that's accurate.
I would find out.
Jeff and I will do some more late work. I just have that in my set. Um, it's a letter for you guys. Here's a report from, and I probably should have made you each a copy of that, but I can't for next week. And this is definitely for next week.
So if I wanted to kind of understand this, I could just go visit with the appraiser's office?
Yes.
That's just for our information.
Right. And I guess that's it, I didn't give you minutes, so if you want to deal with those today, fine, if you don't, fine, whatever.
So, yeah.
I gave you minutes, so if you want to deal with those today. And that one is the extension council, and I believe it's how much of each kind of district we have as a.
So this came from the state?
Definitely.
This is just talking about the compass of, I remember talking about this before.
So how would we have the knowledge to be able to verify this information on this Excel spreadsheet about?
I wouldn't know any, I mean, because this is exactly one word, it says agriculture, the agriculture is that, so how much of the agriculture is.
So it says he's the intern agricultural economist intern at Kansas Department of Agriculture, and so he sent us this spreadsheet about our county, and it says therefore I would greatly appreciate it if you could verify the information on the attached Excel file based on your knowledge and the information. This would be a great thing to see if Fred would. There, I don't, I mean, this is about agricultural activities.
Yeah, that, I mean, it goes down to like, isn't there one hundred and about nuts, like?
Fruit farming, commercial, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, people raise walnuts or.
So it's sent to us, but who who would have the data that could verify that?
It would take state.
I think that's where it came from, because he said.
Well, it says this to whom are made concern, it's not to the calculations.
Well, that.
Land development would be the person who would know more about what this. Yeah, I mean, they would be the ones that would know what a lot of that stuff was. Because aren't they the ones that know?
Maybe that we end up with, I don't know, if she's getting agriculture broken down to that degree.
I don't know, that's.
Is it to the county or just?
So this one, we'll probably want, uh, Matt here next week to go over. Is this happy done this week?
Yes, you've been on the, I've been, you know, I've been working it out, putting it off.
So it's one of us who wants to do this.
I do not.
So are you gonna make a motion that I do this, is that what you're saying? I've seen this is going on.
I will make a motion to make Jay Bailey the point of contact person for the regional hazard mitigation plan participation.
I shouldn't second it, but I will.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chairman, if you please, we can sign.
I'll have to show where it's on, everything on here.
So I think author is representative of the jurisdiction, I would send that to you, you need to sign there. And then I will just fill in your information, because they don't ask me to sign it. And then we'll have Greg and Curtis fill in his information and it's completed.
I missed anything else.
Would you sign one more, if he doesn't want to sign, sorry.
You just want to make.
I do, I'm just trying to. Okay.
You? You want this back, or if I just leave it here for next week? No, this is the one about the.
Yes.
I'm not sure that you get Matt to copy that, so.
You have other copies? Yes, otherwise, I'm just gonna leave it here for next. Because he would need to explain what this means and then how we, um, correct it, I guess.
Anything else? You got anything, Heather? I'm gonna redo the last six minutes.
August first, twenty twenty two, the Board of County Commissioners met in regular session on Monday, August first, twenty twenty two, with Commissioners Bailey and Cooter present, Commissioner Dieter was absent. Josh and I, County Councilor, was also present. Commissioner Bailey read the minutes of the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty two meeting. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Dieter to approve the minutes of July twenty fifth.
Cooter, did I have it right?
Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter.
Yeah.
Did I miss that?
I thought you said Dieter. Okay.
I don't even know what I read. Sorry. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to approve the minutes of the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty two meeting, both voted aye, motion carried. Discussion was held on the unofficial detour route from Linden to O Sage City. Those present were Donna Connell, O Sage County EMS, Emily Burkett, Jay Burkett, and Rod Harmon, Superior Township. Jim Shively, Ryan Fine, O Sage County Public Works Director, Dan Crum, and Don Hook, Vallowburg Township. Josh Moore, Jason Yuland, Jack Trucking. Debbie Rensler, Michelle Anshutes, and Steve Boeckman, Kansas Department of Transportation. Jason Thompson, Fred Hollowell, and Dale Schlinger, City of O Sage City.
Actually, it said Dale Schwager. Yeah, I just added T to the end, I think that's quite close, I don't, not sure I spell it.
I will look that, I was trying to read it.
Items discussed were speed limits, road maintenance, stop signs, truck traffic, and dust control. KDOT officials offered to place additional message boards to redirect traffic before they get to the official detour and help with dust control. Ryan Fine, Public Works Director, will work with KDOT officials and township officers to the issues discussed. Stephanie Burdette, Burdette, HR Director, meant to present a memo for the online civil rights training. The commissioners signed the memo. Christine Foster, County Treasurer, meant to request an executive session. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to meet executive session with Christine Foster, County Treasurer, and Josh, not Josh, nine County Counselor from nine thirty five AM until nine forty five AM to discuss a matter involving identifiable, non-elected personnel to protect the privacy rights of the individuals. Both voted aye, motion carried. The commissioners returned to regular session at nine forty five. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to extend the executive session with Christine Foster, County Treasurer, and Josh and I, County Counselor, from nine forty five AM until nine fifty AM to discuss a matter involving identifiable, non-elected personnel to protect the privacy rights of the individuals, both voted aye, motion carried. The commissioners returned to regular session at nine fifty AM, no action was taken as a result of the executive session. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to approve the merit increase of Angela Snyder from thirteen twenty five to fourteen dollars per hour effective August first, twenty twenty two. The hiring of Cassandra Lowry at a rate of thirteen twenty five per hour, part-time effective August first, twenty twenty two. The hiring of Virginia Atkinson at a rate of thirteen twenty five per hour, part-time effective August second, twenty twenty two. The hiring of Samantha Jansen at a rate of thirteen twenty five per hour, part-time effective August first, twenty twenty two. The hiring of Bill Allman at a rate of fifteen dollars effective August first, twenty twenty two. Except the resignation of Yvette Munoz Rogers effective August third, twenty twenty two, and Stacy Whitaker effective July twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, both voted aye, motion carried. Caitlin Minor, Health Director, met to discuss the national night out plans for O Sage County and Health Department pool in the event. Amy Minor and Jan Wolverton met to present information on their nonprofit cat rescue and discuss issues with feral cats. The commissioners will take the information under advisement. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to approve the hiring of John Wesley O'Hara effective August first twenty twenty two at a rate of seventeen thirty eight per hour, both voted aye, motion carried. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to meet an executive session with Josh and I, County Counselor, from ten thirty five AM until ten forty five AM to discuss a matter that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, both voted aye, motion carried. The commissioners returned to regular session. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to extend the executive session with Josh and I, County Counselor, until ten forty five AM until ten fifty to discuss a matter that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client privilege. Commissioners returned to regular session at ten fifty AM, motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to extend the executive session with Josh and I, County Counselor, from ten fifty AM until ten fifty two AM.
You said two minutes, that's what you gave up.
To discuss a matter that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, both voted aye, motion carried.
What was that again?
You, he told me two minutes when he came out.
Oh, yeah.
The commissioners returned to regular session at ten fifty two AM, no action was taken as a result of the executive session. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by.
I was laughing.
Yeah, I've got like three things in there.
To pay half of the bill for the Bassar Community Center for Animal Removal, both voted aye, motion carried. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to allow Linden to use the courthouse loan on October first, twenty twenty two for the Linden Fall Festival, both voted aye. Motion carried. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to send out the request for proposals for the Motorola equipment buildings. Both voted aye, motion carried. The following claims were allowed in a total dollar amount of checks issued for the following funds of general, road bridge, health, waste disposal, election appraiser, noxious weed, O Sage County Main and Lateral Sheriff Inspection Fees, Lake Patrol, Emergency nine one one Wireless, and diversion fees in the amount of six hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars, ninety seven cents. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to approve the claims presented, both voted aye, motion carried. Motion was made by Bailey, seconded by Cooter to adjourn to meet regular session on Monday, August eighth, twenty twenty two, all voted aye, motion carried.
Are there any additions or corrections other than stated? Now that I make a motion, I'm sure the minutes is read.
As read and corrected?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All post same sign, motion carries. Anything else? Have you got anything? I'll make the motion adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, all post same sign, we are adjourned.